Mr. McLaughlin, followed by the vacation by myself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, due to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for every day that you bless us with. Please be with our community today, and please be with those in Florida that are preparing for hurricane. Let all our citizens come together and please help one another and be better to one another. And, Lord, help this board. Let us do your work and show your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Taylor?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board members. First item is the approval of your agenda. Note in the bullpen is the addition of revisions to the board bylaws regarding the meeting agenda order, and that would be in addition to the consent agenda.
We get a motion. I'll make a motion to approve, plus the one in the bullpen. Any discussion? Mr. Yakubowski? Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair.
Next up are public comments. Nikki, has anyone signed up?
Yes.
Run through the guidelines. Public presentations are an opportunity for citizens to present matters that you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from citizens to the Board of Supervisors. This is not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided signup sheet, and please print clearly. Come to the lectern when your name is called. Clearly state your name and your voting district for our record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes to speak, or on behalf of a group, in which case you'll have five minutes. Public presentations will not be used to address matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. Written comments are always welcome, and there is a light panel on the podium. Green means go. Yellow means you have 30 seconds to sum up, and when the light turns red, your microphone will be turned off. Nikki, who's the first speaker?
Dave Hammond, followed by Richard Gennali.
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Hammond. I live in the Livingston District, and I'm speaking for myself this afternoon. I provided you with written comments. I'm going to paraphrase this to make a point. Several documents were added to the county website last week. One of them was a draft of a special use permit written by S-Power. So, you know, I've been asking, who's going to write this? Well, we got S-Power's input right now, and I want to talk about that a little bit. So, this contains 16 paragraphs. Eight of the paragraphs, S-Power says, "Follow our plans." So, they're saying the requirement should be, follow their plans. So, S-Power is saying their plans are complete, and they contain all the requirements that should be in there. Alls you have to do is tell us to follow the plans. Two of the paragraphs follow state requirements. So, one refers to erosion and stormwater runoff. The other refers to the SCC final order requirements. The other six are all financial incentives to the county. I find it astounding that the message from this document, for me, is, tell us to follow our plan, and we will provide incentives to the county. It's outrageous and insulting, as far as I'm concerned. This other document from the concerned citizens that we provided to you contains actual requirements to prevent harm to the public, to the wildlife, and to the environment. And the contrast between these two documents is really kind of shocking. So, in here, there are about 50 requirements that we feel need to be in the special use permit to protect from harm. They're specific, they're researched, they have background to them. And, you know, the contrast is just staggering to me. So, basically, we're asking for your help to get these requirements into the special use permit and make sure that the project, not just during construction, but through operation and all the way through decommissioning, is robust enough to stand up to 35 years and will protect the citizens and the environment. Thank you for your time.
Richard Gennali, followed by Russ Mueller.
Good afternoon. Richard Gennell, Livingston District. So, I have three points I want to reinforce regarding the SUP for the solar facility. Point one, S-Power testified before the SCC in response to interrogatories that biosolids, fertilizers containing phosphorus and chemical cleaning agents would not be used on-site during construction or operation of the facility. So, a prohibition against the use of these substances should rightly be imposed in the SUP. Two, burning of cut-over debris on any or any other materials on-site must be prohibited as well. In response to health and safety concerns, S-Power agreed to mulch most of the roody cut-over debris on-site, but stated an intention to burn some of the debris, such as stumps. Trench burning supposedly reduces the amount of smoke and ash, but it is the exposure to small, nearly invisible particles that are hazardous to children, including teenagers, elderly people, and individuals with conditions such as heart disease, emphysema, and asthma. In this regard, the board should be aware that a senior citizen's housing area borders the eastern edge of Site A, and Brock Road Elementary School is three miles east. Westerly prevailing winds blow directly at the school from the direction of Site A. State regulations do not address burning of very large areas or huge amounts of debris specifically. The regs focus on safety rather than the human health concerns. Thus, the county cannot rely on state regs to impose necessary controls on burning. The restrictions must be included in the SUP. Three. Lastly, S-Power's proposal regarding fire protection on-site is totally inadequate. No firefighting personnel or equipment will be stationed on-site. When, not if, a forest or brush fire occurs on-site, it will only be a matter of a few minutes before the blaze threatens one or more of the 27 homes, 27,000 or 2,700 homes that surround the periphery of the three sites. The nearest firefighting units are Station 7, which is five miles from the nearest planned entry point to Site A, and Station 1, which is eight miles distant. Brush fires can travel up to about 14 miles per hour. That's about one and a half miles in six minutes. At that rate, a fire will likely engulf a populated area before firefighters can reach the location. So, there has to be some requirement put in the SUP that there be some sort of firefighting capability on-site to respond to the likelihood of a lightning strike, which all that metal out there, sunk in the ground, I-beam steel, there will be lightning strikes out there. And when you have dry grass and brush, it's going to catch fire, and it's going to spread quickly. Thank you.
Russ Mueller, followed by Vivian Stanley.
Russ Mueller in the Livingston District. Very soon, March, you're going to be taking a vote, one way or another, on this massive project, if largest in the country, largest on the East Coast, solar. Now, I just want to state our view, which is also the State Corporation Commission view, the judges and the attorneys who went over each of the conditions that are in our document here and that were presented down there. And they made a point that the Board of Supervisors, the county of Spotsylvania, has not only the authority, but the responsibility to prevent harm. It's on the record down there, if you want to read the pages. I just did before I came in here. So, I don't want any confusion on that point, and I hope there isn't any confusion. It's not like I heard there's confusion. But let's not hear any pushback from any party on that issue. I think that stands on its own. It's a legal issue. I'm not an attorney, but on good authority, we've been told that the conditions we present are quote-unquote reasonable within state law. Why? Because we've gone to very long, tedious means of showing scientifically the harm that can result. We're just asking that there be no harm. Is that so hard to do? So, as you proceed, please proceed with that in mind. Now, on the long-term issue here that I mentioned the last time here, S-Power applied on July 11 for another 300 megawatts at the same Dominion substation, from 500 to 300. They've said, "We're not going to expand the 500 sites." No, they're not. They just want another 300. So, this is an active PJM grid provider under review, under review. Once they say yes, you bet your Biden dollar they'll be in here in 10 seconds with at least two more special use permits.
Mr. Mueller, I'm sorry, but your time is up, sir.
Vivian Stanley, followed by Michael O'Beere.
Vivian Stanley, Livingston District. Now, before I start talking, I want you to know that these are things I'm saying here. I'm not accusing any of you guys of doing this. This is for general information. Bribe, that is money or favor given or promised to a person or group in a position of trust to influence his or their judgment or conduct, something that serves to induce or influence. Incentive, something that incites or has a tendency to move to action or determination. That came, all those definitions came from Webster's Collegiate Dictionary. So, but they're basically the same thing, aren't they? Yes, they are. These two words seem to be interchangeable. So, let's point out the items listed by S-Power. Now, that's in that Supplement 1801 that somebody was just talking about. They say that they don't want to use our groundwater, right? They're going to get their own water. Well, doggone, if there isn't a number five here, says that they may utilize our groundwater for a period not to exceed 180 days, consecutive days, at any one time. So, that means they can use the 180 days, wait a couple of days, and by golly, they can start another 180 days, can't they? Yes, indeed, they can. Okay, then, and then I go down to number 10 on that same document. Applicant agrees to reimburse the county for expenses incurred. I bet they do. Number 12, the applicant agrees to provide the county solar panels for use on county-owned facilities, which they have named specifically schools and government buildings. Well, doggone, you know that solar powers produce electromagnetic radiation, which is extremely harmful to people with ADHD. They may not even know they have ADHD, but they do or will get it because kids are very vulnerable. They have thin bones. Their brains are not that well-protected. So, I call that one of their brilliant suggestions. And then, number 14, they're going to provide some little roundabout road, big deal. The applicant agrees to expend $3.1 million as a cost share for water that the county would be running out there to their property. Well, doggone, that's just not right because it's going to cost $7,000, $7 million to do this, and so who's going to get stuck with the other $4 million?
Ms. Stanley, your time has expired.
Michael O'Beere.
Michael O'Beere, 11201, Chancal Meadows Lane. I took these articles in the, on the web yesterday, October 5, 2018, the advisor Tribune at Ohio, says, "S-Power, go home." They're trying to do a wind turbine generating facility up there, and it says, "The bully tactics they're trying to pull on leaseholders, says they're not going to put up with it." They said, you know, "You're trying to be a friend, you know, go back where you come from." The other day, the same paper, it says, "Good neighbor's agreement may not be so good." It's all talked about wind turbines, but also it's all S-Power. They're trying to do strong-arm taxes to landowners that have joined this thing, and, you know, they're bucking it. They don't want it. And this other one, from 2015, shows corruption through S-Power and all of them. It's the whole damn county seat. They said, "S-Power has refused to comply with any agreement," and are trying to, with the, that's a wind solar plant, too, working with an invalid permit, says, "S-Power moved the equipment from 2,100 foot from any home to 1,000 foot from any home," and are getting away with it. It's crazy what these people think they can get away with. I don't understand how, in God's green earth, anybody of the right sense would approve this thing to be next to people's homes. I don't understand. I'll say, "How you can do this to the county?" And about the roundabout at Brock Road and 621, it took them five years to hand the electric line down through there for the telephone. How are they going to get a roundabout? Who's palm are they going to agree to get that done, just like the man said at the meeting? Well, we got to find the right politician to do it. That's bullshit, in my opinion. Who's going to, and you're going to let them destroy the county as it is, then you're going to destroy the heritage of this county. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
There is no one else signed up to speak?
So, anyone else that did not come forward?
Alfred King, Livingston District. I want to make two points. First of all, at the meeting last week, S-Power's local project manager indicated that they hoped to be digging by February. And the basis of this was that the county has one year from the time they made the initial application. In effect, they're assuming that that initial application, as modified, is going to be approved within that one-year period. You've heard all the comments. There's a lot of work yet to be done, and I, for one, do not see how the planning commission can hold its meetings, make a decision, make a recommendation to you. You hold one or two meetings, and a final vote would be taken within that 12-month period. If necessary, I would suggest that you negotiate with S-Power for an extension of that one-year period, because otherwise, all these complex issues are going to be rushed to judgment. The second point I want to make is that I have not yet completed my study on the economic consequences of the solar project to the county's tax revenue. But where I am right now, and I still have to get a few questions answered from the assessor's office, it looks as though there will be a net loss of tax revenue because of the solar project, despite the $600,000 which the S-Power has committed to pay, and it's not clear how that commitment can be enforced. But assuming that there's good faith on both sides, that $600,000 inflow to the county's tax rolls will be offset by a more than $600,000 reduction. I'm writing an analysis of this for an op-ed piece in the Freelance Star. And what I would suggest you, as board members, think long and hard. How are you going to justify that the county is being asked to subsidize S-Power and Microsoft? It'll be subsidized because your tax revenue is going to be reduced, not increased. And a reduction in property tax income is going to have to be paid by someone. And I want you to think of how you're going to justify asking us to subsidize a major corporation. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up that wishes to speak at this time? Close public presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next will be the approval of your consent agenda. Have the floor computer, please. It's a consent agenda for October 9 of 2018. Item one is the approval of board meeting minutes for September 11, 2018. Item two is to accept and appropriate the State Homeland Security Grant for the Regional Unmanned Aerial System Program for our sheriff's office. This is a grant of $45,150, and there's no local match. Third is to approve a contract with RJ Smith Construction, Inc., to provide the old sheriff's office demolition and courthouse stabilization, $1,019,998. Item four is to approve a contract to Nostos SS Contractors LLC and a budget amendment. This is for the courthouse elevated water storage tank upgrades at $253,000. Item five is to accept and approve donated funds from the Silverliners Dance Association for parks and recreation activities, programs, and supplies for senior citizens. This is accepting a donation of $1,144. Item six is the approval of a purchase order to Matheny Fire and Emergency, Inc., for a 2019 E1 Cyclone II tanker for a fire rescue and emergency management at a price of $721,997. Item seven is the approval of purchase order to Matheny Fire and Emergency, Inc., for a 2019 E1 Cyclone II engine for fire rescue and emergency services. This is $599,851. Item eight is the approval of task order to Rumel Clipper &amp; Call, R-K-N-K. This is for pump station 23 and 24 replacements. This is $420,537. Item nine is a budget amendment, approval of a budget amendment and appropriation for the purchase and replacement, a purchase of a replacement generator for the Holbert Building. This is to maintain energy to the NOC, our core computer internet link. Item 10 is to approve budget amendment to add three mid-year SROs to fund additional Children's Services Act mandated costs, and to make the school division whole for the FY 2019 budget as adopted. Item 11 is the Dabney Woods Street Acceptance to the, into the Virginia Secondary System of Roads. This is in the Berkeley District. Item 12 is to accept and appropriate 2017 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. This is a SAFER grant acceptance for 10 SAFER grant positions. Item 13 is adoption of resolution approving the Mallard Road right-of-way abandonment in the Berkeley District. This is an abandonment of the end, the south end of Mallard Road from the state secondary system of highways. Item 14 is to approve the continuance of R18002 Keswick Land Development Corp., Keswick Senior Apartments LLC, and Keswick Apartments 1 LLC. It's a land use case in the Berkeley District. This would continue it for a vote at your October 23 board meeting, and this is before you at the applicant's request. Item 15 is to adopt revisions to the board's remote attendance policy to align with state code. Item 16 is the approval of VACO voting credentials for the annual business meeting. Credentials for Supervisor Trampy, who will be attending the meeting set in November 13, 9:00 a.m. The additional item from the bullpen are revisions to the board bylaws regarding the meeting agenda order, placing approval of the consent agenda before public comments at the beginning of your meeting, and that is today's consent agenda.
Any members want to? Mr. Ross?
I'd like to pull 10, 15, and then the last one that we just added.
Anybody else? All right. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda except for 3, 10, 15, and 17?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ross for approval of the agenda minus 3, 10, 15, and 17. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair. All right. Let's start it, want to start at the lower. Let's just do number three, Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just want to clarify on that, the foundation that we're stabilizing, I believe, is the old courthouse?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is it, can you break that down as far as, I don't know if you have it right now, what the cost for demolishing the old sheriff's office and what the stabilization's going to cost us? Do you have any idea?
Ben?
I do not have the breakdown currently of the demolition versus stabilization, although we can certainly get that information to the board here in the next couple of days pretty easily.
One other question I have here, and that is, on the notes that we have here, there was a contractor, Earth Crafters Incorporated. It looks like their price was $840,000, $237,000 is the information, and yet RJ Smith Construction was $1 million. Is there, and we've gone with the higher bid. So, I'm asking, is there something I'm not reading in here?
The bid from Earth Crafters was actually declared non-responsive, basically non-responsive from the procurement office, based on the information provided within the bid package. So, at that point, we had to go to the next lowest bid, which we negotiated nearly $200,000 of that cost.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Ross, you have a number?
Yeah, just for 10 and 15, I thought they were, I understand them, but I thought we should have a brief, have staff just briefly tell the public what they are before we voted on them. That was my concern.
Yes, good evening. 10 is a budget adjustment and appropriation to modify the fiscal year 19 budget to incorporate a number of different things that the board and Finance Committee has talked about for a number of months now, and the schools as well. Basically, when the fiscal year 19 budget was adopted, all but $1 million for both the county and the schools was appropriated for the county and school operations for fiscal year 19. Subsequent to the Board of Supervisors and the school board adopting the schools' budget for fiscal year 19, the schools learned that state revenue for the schools would increase by about $870,000. And so, what this budget adjustment does is it basically swaps out 868,877 in local funding that was approved for the schools in fiscal year 19 for that same amount of state funding that was not expected when the budget was adopted. It then allows for the county to use that $868,000, or at least the bulk of it, to fund increased cost in the Children's Services Act. These are mandated costs run through the Department of Social Services, so to fund the local share of those costs, and also to fund three of the four remaining SROs that will, when they are at it, allow for an SRO to be, to exist at each school. We originally applied for a grant for four SROs. We originally applied for a grant for four SROs. We received word that we will receive one of those four, and so this budget adjustment shifts, shifts local funding that was already planned in the budget as a local match for that grant to fund the three that we will not receive. So basically, what this does is it makes the schools whole for the original budget, in terms of appropriation for the original budget as it was adopted. It also increases the county's budget by added costs on the CSA side, funded by the pullback of local funding, and it appropriates the original $1 million that was withheld from the general fund.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marshall?
I'm fully in support of this, but we need to make, when we make the motion to approve, we need to make a correction to the resolution. The resolution has to add four SROs at mid-year, and it should be three, correct?
You're right. I'm sorry. It should be three.
Okay, so we need to, we need to make that correction. Thank you.
Thanks for catching that.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry. Dr. Trampy?
The SROs by themselves is $210,000, is that correct?
The SROs by themselves is $141,000.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Number 17, the revisions to the board bylaws. Actually, this, yeah, let's vote on the 3, 10, and 15, and then we'll come to 17. Do you have a motion on that?
Last one. We need to make a correction.
I think this is, this is just the vote on 10, correct?
3, 10, and 15. Not 15? Okay. 3 and 10.
We need to make a correction to 10. You gotta, yeah.
I'll just make a motion to approve 3 at this time, since it was my poll.
All right. Motion to approve 3. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair, aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve 10 with the, with the correction that it's three SROs, not four.
Mr. Chairman?
I support the aspect of this for the, for the school security officers. I've long felt that if that was a priority for the schools, that they should, should help us with that. But I didn't approve of pulling a million dollars from the school budget just because they got extra money from the state. We get more revenue than we anticipate every year, so I don't, I didn't agree with that, so I'm gonna vote no.
Well, just so you know, Dr. Trampy, I've heard the other day that they have another $3 million overage, if you want to call it that. I'm sure they're gonna use it one way or the other. Mr. Yakubowski? Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
No.
And Chair's aye. For 15, you want to go with that call?
Yes. Jane Reeve administers this remote attendance policy, but we, we provided draft changes to align with the state code. The state code controls how the board can attend remotely, it's set out, so these changes to the policy are just to reflect the changes in the state, state code. Essentially, there are some minor changes. There was a revision to the state code to allow for remote attendance, regardless of whether or not it's emergency, personal matters, and also it's striking the term emergency. They also limited to the remote participation. Previously, it was two meetings or 25% of the meetings, whichever was fewer, and they've limited or eliminated the 25%, so it's now just two. And other than that, there was a requirement that if the board rejects remote participation, that it do so in the meeting minutes. They added the requirement with specificity, so now that is required in the remote attendance policy, and that, those changes should track the state code, and that's, they're before you for, for consideration.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to know, I'd like to know one thing, please, and that is, if they're taking the word "emergency" out, okay, is there any place we can find out what they define as an emergency?
I can check to see how they define that, or would have defined that previously, but it can still certainly be for what you characterize as an emergency. I would assume an emergency would also, could be characterized as a personal matter.
Death in the family is what I'm thinking of.
Of course.
We call it emergency, but...
And I think part of the issue may have been if, how they normally define emergency. Most emergencies, you probably wouldn't be attending remotely. More often than not, it's the case, it's really just a personal matter, so. But I can certainly look that up for you.
Thank you. That's it.
Ms. Skinner, you want him to look that up for you?
I didn't intend that he, I didn't think that he wanted it right now. I can find that.
We can vote on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Approve 15.
Motion by Mr. Marshall to approve number 15. I'll start down with you, Ms. Skinner. Ms. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Chair, aye. 17. Anybody want to start off?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
So, I'd like to amend this, that you could put on the agenda, public presentations for, for any item on the consent agenda, so that somebody, if somebody came to our meeting and wanted to speak about something that was on the consent agenda, they could, but only for that, and chances are, nine times out of 10, nobody would speak about something that would be on the consent agenda. That would, because I think the reason we have public presentations before we do the consent agenda is specifically, and correct me if I'm wrong, so that somebody can speak to something that's on the consent agenda. So if we simply add the first item of business to be, public presentations for consent agenda items only, and then have public presentations, and then have, or, and then they have the consent agenda, and then public presentations, it would prevent people having to wait for a long period of time before they, they actually would be able to speak.
Anybody else? Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, is, public presentations currently is before the consent agenda? And so what this does is this would swip it, switch it, and put the consent agenda before the public presentations, thereby not allowing people to speak about things that were on the consent agenda, since we already voted on it. So if the intention is to allow people to vote on the consent agenda, I think we should keep it as is, which would be my intention, because I have been clocking the time, and we have now been working on the consent agenda for 17 minutes since the end of the public presentation time. Public presentation time ended at 4:52, which was roughly 17 minutes after the end of the invocation and the pledge. So I would much rather put our citizens at the, at the front and allow them to speak on anything, and then have them wait and sit in the audience until we're done discussing what is on the consent agenda. So on this change, I would, I would be against it.
Any other comment?
I'll just say, I support it, because, one for our employees, like I said, we had the sheriff back there and at least two, possibly three other deputies that, but I'm sure we're here for consent agenda items. Numerous times, we have staff that will come and just, basically, they're sitting and making sure that things are approved, and then we, we have some big topic items, they're sitting for, I mean, at times, well over an hour, if not more, just stagnant. It's not fair to them. 17 minutes to wait for an agenda that is usually approved fairly quickly, with little discussion and little comment from the citizens, I don't think is asking that much. Like I say, we just finished up with some, some very emotional public presentations just about every single time we, we came. That was county staff's time, sitting, and just stagnant, especially when you look at the fire services and emergency, you know, the public safety side, that I'm sure they can be out doing something better than sitting in here waiting to, for an approval of a agenda item that's not going to be debated or discussed anyway. So I approve, I agree with Mr. Ross, and I, I like that idea. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, what, what's the motion?
It'd be to put a public pres, agenda topic items, presentations first. So if a citizen wants to make comment on a public presentation, I mean, on the agenda, they can sign up for that, will then move to the agenda, and then would be public presentations where it opened for them.
Isn't that what we have right now?
No.
See, we changed it last time, so the public could speak before the consent agenda. We made this change, and I thought that was the purpose, so people could speak, and I think we, why don't we just move our meeting along faster? It would be probably the better solution, but...
We've tried that numerous times.
I don't support changing this, so, okay. Thanks.
But, but as compared to what was put up on the board, all we would be doing is moving public presentation time after the consent agenda, and I would say most of the time, our consent agenda does go rather quickly, not all the time, but it does, but this would, my revision to what was put up would have a public presentation time, just as it is right now, but just for any item on the consent agenda, and then we would do the consent agenda, and then have public presentations after. So that would be the motion.
All right. Ms. Skinner?
Really, I, I'm sort of with Mr. McLaughlin. I mean, they have the right to come up now in public presentation and talk about anything on this agenda, I believe, other than when we have a public hearing. So I don't understand why we're moving things around, I really don't. It's worked pretty well. If somebody wants to come up and talk about the approval of purchase order, the Matheny Fire and Emergency V-Hicle, let them. They have that ability to do it right now. And as Mr. McLaughlin, we set this, this, this process up, and I'm not sure we're gaining anything whatsoever by it, okay? It's, I'm just, don't think, but go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ross?
So again, what, what we're gaining, especially if we have, say, I mean, as we move forward, we're gonna have a lot more people coming to our meetings, probably for two major issues coming to the county. One is the crucible, and one is S-Power. So they'll, I foresee a lot more public presentation than we've already had. We've already had a lot because of those issues, and it's great. It's great to have that public presentation time. But what it does is, if you have staff out in the audience on several of those consent agenda items, then they may be sitting here for an hour to an hour and a half on something that, as Mr. Benton already said, is not even going to be debated. Like, we didn't even talk about the drones tonight, right? But Sheriff Harris was out here, or, or we didn't, well, we did talk about the SROs, so maybe that's why he was here, but we didn't talk about the, the grant for the drones that was in the consent agenda. We didn't pull it off, we didn't discuss it, it was passed with the consent agenda. Have we had, say, 50 people come here to, to talk about a topic, then Sheriff Harris would be waiting in the back for an hour to an hour and a half during those public presentation times, waiting to see if we were gonna approve his item on the consent agenda. So the, just as, it could be a win-win in the fact that it doesn't take a lot of time to do, and, I mean, normally, normally, the consent agenda doesn't take a lot, it'll free up staff, but it also won't delay the public that much from speaking, and in many cases, especially at our 4:30 meeting, it may give the public more time to get here in order to talk at public presentation time. So I see it as a win-win.
And I'll tell you, I'm the one kind of brought it up, because I got a anonymous request from staff, from a staff person, who was having to sit here on numerous occasions for long periods of times, waiting for presentations to be over, before this person could hear what was on the agenda, know they didn't have to speak, or justify, make justifications for what was on the consent agenda, and could either go back to work or go home, instead of sitting hours after, you know, a time this person should have been off, just sitting, waiting for, number one, the board meeting in general, and then having to sit through numerous presentations before this person even, and be quite honest, wasn't needed. So it's a waste of staff's time. We want to sit here and keep the sheriff coming, and the chief coming, and all our other directors and various personnel coming, we, I mean, again, and, you know, several times, we've had people that we were gonna recognize, they've had to sit through this stuff for hours before we could get to the consent agenda and actually pull them up front and do a presentation to them. So it's not really fair to them either. I think this would help in, in general. You know, this is one of the times where we're, you know, we're debating an agenda item, but normally, this is not the case, and they go fairly quick. So this is why I added it, and I hope, hope for the support for it. Mr. Yakubowski?
Yeah, just another point, yes, it, it's not very often that it happens, but we only have two meetings a month, and actually, one that only takes place at 4:30. So I think it's not that big of a deal. I'd much rather put our citizens first. No offense to our employees, who do a great job, but if they have to sit through a little bit of time once a month, that's a sacrifice, I think, that, that, that they should make, especially when our citizens can get up here and speak their minds. If it gets to a point where we have 150 people out here, and it's gonna push consent agenda back till 9 o'clock, we can, we can suspend our bylaws and do our consent agenda, and then move on. So for those extreme cases, we can do it, but I think the, the message I'd like to send to our, our citizens out there is that they're welcome here to speak about anything at 4:30 and at, at the later public presentation time, and I'd much rather put our citizens ahead of our staff members.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, this isn't about putting citizens ahead of staff or staff ahead of citizens, it's about the best use of everybody's time. You know, most, most often, if we have issues, public presentation time is going to take a long time, a lot longer. Tonight's an exception, right? We're talking about something for a long time tonight, but we normally don't, that would be on the consent agenda. And so normally, the consent agenda takes maybe five minutes, normally, not tonight, but normally it does. And so we would be deferring to about five minutes and saving other people's time of hours. So again, this is not about putting, I, I don't like this, this stigma that anybody that votes for this is putting citizens behind county employees, that's not the case. I think it's just the best efficient use of everybody's time.
Mr. Marshall?
Now, if, if we go with the changes that are here, I'd like to make a suggestion to, we, we would need to change, change this time, you know, we have a public presentation still being at 4:31 p.m. If we push that back to 4:50, give you 20 minutes for your invocation, your pledge, and your consent agenda, and that way you wouldn't, that would save your citizens' time also, they know at 4:50 it's starting. If they were running behind, it gives them a little more time to get here.
That's, that's it, too. I mean, this is a bedroom, this majority is a bedroom community, so a lot of, majority of our folks are commuting, and it would allow a little bit of extra time for them to get here and be prepared to get involved, so. Motion on floor, Mr. Ross, to provide for a consent agenda, presentations, then approval of the consent agenda, and then public presentations.
And I would add Mr. Marshall's friendly amendment to that, too, that we would...
That is the time. So we do the pledge allegiance, we do the prayer, whatever, and then we go into, we were going into public comments right after that, and then it would go into that. Now, you're gonna move this directly after the prayer?
Yeah, after the...
Because it's not gonna take us 20 minutes to do, to do the, it's not gonna take us that much. If you want to put one ahead of the other, but I don't think the timing, we're gonna sit here for 20 extra minutes, you said, like, I thought you said 4:50 or something like it was.
Right, I was giving us 20 minutes for it to be read, and if you had any discussion, you could have that.
So you are saying that the, will the discussion from the public be before it's read or after it's read? That's the next question.
The public, the way, the way, the way the motion is presented, it would be, the public presentation would be after consent agenda.
But then they can also talk about the consent agenda, correct?
There is a public presentation for the agenda, or the consent agenda.
Okay. So my point is, county administrator will read those, and then do we open it up for public before we vote on it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yes.
I was, I was going with the 20 minutes off of Mr. Yakubowski. He had timed it at 17, so that's, that's where I got the number from, guys.
Okay.
Carl, did you have something?
I thi, I think I understand the desire here, but I understand Mr. Ross would like to, to accept the change, to put the consent agenda first, and then allow public presentations, but allow those public presentations to speak, if they would, on the consent agenda that was just voted upon. I understand that, I would respect...
No, Carl, that's not it.
Okay.
No, Carl, that's not it.
Okay.
So there would be two public presentations in my motion, right? The first public comment time would be before we vote on the consent agenda and it would be for anybody that wants to speak. Let's say somebody wanted to speak about the drones tonight, right? So they would be able to say, yes, I'm here, I'm, so that would be, maybe that's the hard part about it. I'm here, I would like to speak about this consent agenda item on the drones, for example, tonight, before we vote. Most of the time, nobody speaks about anything that's in our consent agenda. I can't even, I can't recall that ever happening. But that provides the opportunity for the public then to talk on something that's in the consent agenda before we actually vote on it. So it's kind of like, right now we have a public presentation time, except, not if it's part of the public hearing, right? So you wait until you comment on that. So this would be a public presentations for anything on the consent agenda only. If you have something else that's public presentation, then no. So I would say normally in a meeting, we would have nobody that would speak in that public presentation time. Then we do the consent agenda, we vote on the consent agenda and then we go to public presentations.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I would, that's the first comment. I would respectfully request that, should the board take this up, that it take it up as direction, allow us to go ahead, draft that change and come back. Presumably, if there's four votes, that should, you know, go through on the next consent agenda without much debate. The second issue was, the reason why the, the timing is the way it is, is the 4:31, 4:32, that way is, if the consent agenda does go through in 10 minutes instead of the 20, then you're not sitting around for those 10 minutes. So I would recommend respectfully that you leave the time, you know, being one right after the other same, that way there is no, you know, delay where you would just be sitting, waiting for the public presentations to have to start at that later time. Because you can always start later, but you know, if you set it at that date, you, or that time, you'd have to, you'd have to wait.
I'm fine with that.
So my, my question then is, please, do the, we, we have the county administrator go through the consent agenda and then let the people speak on that if they have, or do you want them up front? Because I think it's better for the county administrator to go through it, to explain, and then if you want to open it up for public comments, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Now, do we understand what we're doing?
Yes, sir, I think I do. And again, I would just respectfully ask that Mr. Ross amend his motion to, to direction to come back with that language for consideration in the next meeting.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Okay, so you're removing the public presentation time before the consent agenda, reading the consent agenda, having the public presentation time about the consent agenda and then having another public presentation time for everything else. And we are doing all of this to help an anonymous employee that has sent an email or some type of communication to Mr. Benton claiming that they can use their time better. And yet, we are going to run into, as you know, citizens that show up, that go, that sign up on every single sign up sheet. We're going to spend the time saying, no, you can't talk about that one, please sit down, can you please talk? Why are we muddying the waters when we can just do as we are doing? And if we need to suspend the bylaws, we can suspend the bylaws if there's too many people out here and things are going to be happening during the consent agenda. I just think, keep it as simple as possible and not try to fix every issue that might be coming up.
Mr. Ross?
I would just say this is pretty simple. I would say that probably 99 times out of 100, nobody's going to speak about the consent agenda because they don't right now. So that would just be a brief. Is there anybody, after Mark reads his consent agenda, is there anybody that would like to talk about public presentation about any of those items we just listed? It wouldn't really be a sign up, or there could be, but I would think it, it's just going to move things along actually faster. And, and one thing that Mr. Benton brought up, and I don't want to miss that, we had an award that Travis Byrd wrote up for a lady last, last meeting, I believe, and she waited probably an hour and a half with her husband. It's not the first time that's happened, it happened for the clover, the little girl that found, that set the world, Guinness World Book of Records on clover finding. She waited a long time before we could recognize her. So it's not just staff, it's people that were recognizing for awards and achievements that also sometimes have to wait a long time and that would go away with this, so.
If I might, if we're going to be tinkering with everything and showing how we can really drag out the consent agenda discussion, why don't we then take all presentations and pictures and awards that we're going to give and do it right at the beginning and nobody has to wait? I mean, why don't we address the concerns that we have as opposed to trying to address all the concerns with an issue that might not address all the concerns? That's all. I'm just, I'm not understanding the muddying the water. And, and you're right, I don't like to have people sitting here when they're getting an award or a picture. Let's just move that to the front then. I mean, let's address the issues that are in front of us and not change the whole thing just because of an issue that was brought up. Thanks.
Mr. Marshall?
Mr. Chairman, the address Mr. Yabaski's concern with suspending of the minute, suspending the bylaws, if we do that to move the consent agenda forward, if we left it as is and we did that, we would take away the opportunity for the public to speak about the consent agenda. If we, if we made that switch, if tonight we would have done that, if someone wanted to speak about the consent agenda, we would have took that away from them. I don't, I don't want to do that. I know you don't want to, you want the public to come first and I agree with your statement there, but by doing the, that would muddy the water a little there also. I hope you understand what I'm, where I'm coming from with that.
Mr. Yakubowski?
And I do. And, and so I would also ask that if this were to pass, that if staff could also look into moving any presentations and awards that we do to the very beginning of everything and get that taken care of.
Carl, would that take, would that, we'd have to amend the bylaws from the get-go?
Yeah, if you'd like to have a separate section for awards and presentations, we can certainly draft that up into the bylaws, that's fine. And we can, we can have that there for each meeting if there are awards and presentations, that can always come first if that's what the board desires.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Skinner, I'll start down towards you. Mr. Skinner?
Mr. Chair, just, I just want to double check, there's been a couple, right now I understand before the board is Mr. Ross's amendment to the original matter which was proposed to you and I've asked Mr. Ross to amend his, his motion for direction and, Mr. Ross, was that agreeable? I wasn't sure.
Yes.
Okay, good. And Mr. Yakubowski just offered something, I just wanted to make sure that I don't think that that was added as a substitute. I just want to make sure what's before the board is just the change that Mr. Ross discussed.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I would then like to add what that was. Let's put the awards and recognition of people in front and get it done with, and then we go on with the regular consent agenda item.
You want that as a substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
All right. Do we have everything now?
I think I do, yes.
We're going to give this a try. Mr. Skinner?
Hi.
Mr. Marshall?
Hi.
Dr. Tramby?
Hi.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Hi.
Mr. McLaughlin?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Hi.
And Chair's eye.
That brings us to board reports, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Skinner, I'll start down towards you. Do you have a board report?
I do, sir.
I do, thank you. First one is, I want to talk about my statement, I guess, on the 12th. It was not my intent to attack Captain Buckley's character in my previous comments. If it was taken in that manner, I truly apologize. I would also like to talk about, if the county staff could give us or, and the county attorney, we have land in the Bowman Center. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and see if they could give us the amount of land we have and also talk about a partnership with somebody, what exactly legal we can do, whether we go through the EDA or whether we lease that land. That land's been sitting out there for many years and we're not getting a lot of, so it's just an idea of mine that I'll present to the board. But I'm asking the attorneys to come up, the attorney and the county administrator to talk about what it would take for us to maybe lease that land or be partnership with that land for possibly an adult care center to where we throw things back to the elderly in Spotsylvania. And that could just, it's a thought and that land's been sitting out there and it's along the river and it'd make a beautiful place for an adult care center. It could be a combination of single dwelling, one-story homes like we do, I think on River, River Run, David? You have one out there, I believe, you have an adult care center and you have homes next to it that the spouse can live it, something of that nature?
Yeah, that is correct, on Bragg Road?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so it's just an idea, we've got that land out there and it's been sitting, so I just want to push that forward, please.
And that was the free market that did that, though. It wasn't this board.
Well, I understand that, I understand that, but there's no reason why we can't take action to get some money for this land. We're sitting out there and I think it's valuable land, most of it, well, it sits on the river, so we're just looking at what we can do with that.
Mr. Skinner, if you don't mind, when do you want them to have this ready for you?
I don't care. You can do it in the first meeting of November, is that okay? Does that give you plenty of time? 30 days?
And Carl and Mr. Taylor, y'all clear on what he's asking? Okay.
Now, the other thing I wanted to ask is Livingston landfill, for the, we were listening to S-Power and they were going to burn, they weren't going to burn, remove everything except for the stumps. Can the landfill accept stumps?
Do you know that?
I think you do, but...
Oh, there you go.
No, sir, the landfill currently does not accept stumps just because there is no way, we don't have equipment to really process that. There is equipment out there that you can get that actually grinds the stumps up and makes them more easily to handle, but it is, you know, expensive equipment and kind of an expensive operation, that's the reason the county has not pursued accepting and processing stumps.
Okay.
But we can certainly look at that if that's...
Well, start looking at it, but my point is that S-Power can get rid of the stumps by, by purchasing other equipment and doing it there rather than burning them up.
There are different ways to break down stumps, yes, sir.
Okay. If you would, please, in, when you get some time, if you got those ways that we do it, would you provide all the board members with that information?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Marshall?
Just very briefly, I know the Freelance Star wrote an article about some of our citizens that had done very well at the state fair. Had one gentleman from my area, from my district, he broke the record for having the largest watermelon in the state, which was great, Mr. Hank Houston, that was quite an accomplishment. But also the, the class at Spotsylvania High School, they have Ms. Webb's greenhouse class, they placed first and they were left out of that article. And I don't want none of the kids in Berkeley District or Spotsylvania County to do something great, I don't want them being left out, I just want to recognize them and congratulate them.
Dr. Tramby?
No report.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. A couple of things, number one, want to welcome and also thank for the welcome, thank you for the welcome to Unidine. They had their grand opening on Thursday, Mr. Skinner gave a speech on our behalf because there was a, a nice list of people that were giving speeches and it was not a nice, cool, crisp fall day to be standing outside, so I'm sure people didn't want to hear from me. But they did an outstanding job, I didn't have a chance to take a tour, but I know that staff did and they provided pictures on our Facebook page and we got to meet with, with them and talk with them and encourage them to, to grow here in Spotsylvania. So this board worked to, to get them here and I think it's a great accomplishment for us. In saying that, I know that we are continuing to look for ED prospects and would like to have a discussion at some point about what is the next step. I know we used to have a lot of industrial buildings that were sitting empty and they are not, are no longer sitting empty. The Trump economy is rolling along and we are filling them up and providing jobs to our citizens and I really want to see what the next steps are that, that we can do to incentivize other businesses to be here and to grow and for landowners that are here to, to get their properties ready for the next wave of businesses that want to move here, especially with our exceptional companies that we have. And Unidine, for example, is, is an international company with locations, Piovan, actually, is the, is the, the big company. Unidine is just a subsidiary of them, but they have locations in Japan, China, Germany, Brazil and Italy. And so it is a fantastic company to go along with all the others that have come in and have been here for many years. In addition to that, I wanted to ask staff if we can look at more ways that we can build on our community outreach. I know that Michelle's been doing a great job of getting the word out to people, for example, just the, the tour of Unidine that I had just mentioned, whether there are online polls, live streaming, if we can even do small interviews, things like that and, and get that out and really allow people that can't be here at 4:35 to, to speak or at 6:30 or whatever time it might be, that they can still interact with us and we can still hear from our, our constituents and the board can still get feedback from, from the public. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Ross?
Sir, I got a couple of things. So Bonnie, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to, do you, the CSA costs, do you know what CSA means, what it stands for, the acronym?
Children's Services Act.
Okay, and do you know how, so that's increased, Spotsylvania County's price has increased quite a bit and more than we anticipated this year?
Yes, in fiscal year 18 and we're also expecting that to carry into fiscal year 19 as well.
And what did that increase by?
Percentage?
Over forecast or just dollar amount? Was it 2 million or? I wasn't planning to talk about this, but it kind of, I should have talked about it when we, before we voted on it, too. I wanted the public to know because it's gone up quite a bit. And that's where we're putting a good chunk of this, the additional funds to...
I don't have the number specific to CSA at this time, I do have CSA and DSS combined in fiscal year 18. The increase in revenue associated with those two from the state was 3.1 million and the increase in expenditures for those two was 1.5 million.
1.5, okay.
And, and the bulk of that 1.5 is CSA.
Gotcha. And then, and when we talk about cost per student that we fund our schools, that's not, the CSA costs are not included in that, correct?
That's correct. The CSA cost is entirely on the county's side of the ledger.
And the CSA is, though, actually educating children? That's what the purpose of that CSA money is, correct?
Yes.
It's an educational plan that the Spotsylvania County school system cannot meet, so they're referred to CSA?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So in a way, the money that we are moving over there is to educate our children, it's just not accounted in that way, correct?
Correct.
And I wanted the public to know that.
Correct. And the major, a large part, more than 50% of those costs are related to the school-directed IEPs.
Gotcha. Great. Thank you so much. Sorry for doing that to you, I should have told you.
It's okay.
The next thing I had is, so Mr. Hammond, when he got up and spoke about S-Power, said that there was a special use permit out there that's on a Spotsylvania website that was written by S-Power? Is that correct? Marcus for you.
I only have...
Wanda?
Wanda, help.
What it is, is a document that has some conditions that they're suggesting. So we've been posting all of the submission items for the S-Power cases out to the website so that the public can view them.
Okay.
So that's a submission from them of some suggestions.
So is it okay if I send you something that would be a submission from the citizens? I think I've sent it, but they have that posted as well?
We don't, we haven't been posting all the citizen input to the web, just the S-Power application itself, but we've received a number of suggestions from citizens, including a packet of information from concerned citizens.
So if I were to, if I were to send you a draft SUP from the citizens, would that be possible to post after you review?
I mean, we certainly could, could post it. What we've been posting so far has been application materials for any cases that are pending.
Gotcha. So why would they post a special use permit draft?
That, we're, we're sharing whatever we get from S-Power with everybody, putting it out there for the public. So they, they have submitted to us some suggested conditions, some, some wordings that we're reviewing. We're reviewing the information that comes from the citizens as well, but ultimately what comes before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors will be staff's recommended conditions and they'll be fully vetted through the county attorney's office.
Okay.
So right now, we're just taking everything as suggestions to us and reviewing those.
Okay. Along those same lines, it was mentioned, when is S-Power supposed to go to the Planning Commission and when is it supposed to come to us?
It's not yet scheduled. We are working under a one year from when it was deemed complete, which is at the end of March. So it'll be moving forward here in the next few months, getting to the Planning Commission and then to the Board of Supervisors.
Do you have an estimate on those dates?
December would be the earliest it could make it to the Planning Commission at this point.
And to the board, then? Thirty days?
Yeah, depending on what the Planning Commission does, if they continue the hearing or continue the vote, we would probably be getting it to the board no later than February to allow the board to have some time as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last thing I have is kind of short-term notice, but this Thursday at Shannon Airfield, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, we're going to have Senator Rand Paul and Dave Bratt are going to be out there. I think the doors open at four and it's a rare opportunity that we get a senator here in Spotsylvania County, but that's open to the public and want everybody to know about it. That's all I've got.
With that, I just wanted to thank Ben for working with the citizen out at Fond Lake, going over and above. I appreciate it. Just thank you a lot. And Mr. Taylor, I guess this would be for you. Did we ever get together an inventory of all our properties and stuff, an updated listing? I don't remember getting anything.
We do have an inventory together. It's about that thick. So getting it transferred, I'll have to, we'll check with staff. Well, I think that there was an undertaking at one point to scan all of that and try to make it into an electronic set that could move around more conveniently for the board's perusal.
But you have, you have documents that...
Yes, sir.
...that we can come to you, not that you print off?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Do you know when our next joint meeting with the schools is going to be?
Thinking that was going to be in November at the first meeting.
All right. For the...
Or it should be second.
Second.
Second meeting, November, I'm sorry.
Could you put on that agenda of the three million they're supposedly have above and beyond? I don't know where it came from or how that worked.
I think, Mr. Benton, by default, that will be on there because that is the school's requested carryover from fiscal year 18 to 19. And generally, the school's carryover comes to you as part of the end of year audit or right after the end of year audit, which is going to be the second meeting in November.
I'm glad you got up. I'd hate to put you on this spot. Their OPEB, have they done anything with their obligation?
Not that I'm aware of.
They have a little bit?
Mary's the expert on this. So don't hurt her.
Funded a portion of their OPEB. They have it in an OPEB trust. It's a small portion, but it is a funding and it's my understanding, based on the documents I received today for their carryover, a portion of the carryover will be to put some more additional funding into that OPEB trust.
Okay. That's what I, I had not watched their meeting yesterday. I know there was supposed to be some discussion about...
Yes.
...these funds and where they were going. And I just, I think they made a, you know, these OPEB obligations, they're going to be on us before we blink an eye, the way these years are clicking by. And I think we need to start taking them very seriously, especially with the schools if they haven't put but of a drop in theirs. There's a significant, I think we need to be watching that because I'd hate for it to be, you know, whether I'm on the board or not, you know, early twenties and here we are, nineteen and twenty, whatever it is their obligation is, that's going to be a hard one to stomach all at one time. But also, could you put on there, I know we didn't discuss, I don't, I think we got all sidetracked on our last one, but could you put on there their changes in their pay that they did? They told us they were going to do one thing, I think I got 2% for everybody, 4% for teachers, but then all that got changed. Then they came up with money for the athletic directors. I just wanted some clarification on how we got all this, you know, presented one thing, got something else. And as far as S-Power, you know, this, I still want to caution folks from getting too excited. I mean, planning is still going through a plethora of information and data. There's still our engineers that we've hired and Wanda, have we hired, we've hired these firms?
Yes.
Okay. But we haven't, they haven't delved into it to any great extent either. So there's a lot, there's a long way to go. And before you get all excited over information out there, just, you know, S-Power isn't going to be dictating us, we're going to be dictating S-Power. So at least that's the way I feel and that's the way I perceive it happening. So they want this property to do what they're suggesting. They're going to have to make, like the Fond Lake folks have said, do no harm. So, but you've just got to give us some time to work through all these details and all this information and to verify. We can't just, it doesn't happen overnight. Like I say, almost a year into this thing and we're still going and still collecting information. That's all I've got.
I got one.
Mr. Skinner, go ahead.
Wanda, can I ask you one quick question, please? And that is, we've heard a lot about 300 megawatts being added. Is it, are they going to put in a separate SUP for that, too? Or do they plan to ask for 800 megawatts? Do you know what their intent is?
As far as I know at this point, it's the 500 megawatts in Spotsylvania County. We've asked the question of them and I can report out to you when we hear back what the definitive answer is as to that additional megawatts.
Well, they are going through the same station, I understand. So it would seem like to me it's part of the real plan here.
Or it may be in Orange County.
Oh. But running through the Spotsylvania power source, I mean, the, whatever they call it, substation?
The proximity of the land in Orange County makes it feasible, yes. So, but I can report out to the board. We have a meeting, we have a weekly meeting with S-Power, so tomorrow I'll ask them to respond in writing to that question.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chair, one other thing is, you asked a question about what they did with the athletic directors or those positions. I think they were, what they talked to us about last time we met, they were doing, they were matching the Evergreen Study. That's where they came up with those funds, is what the Evergreen Study had recommended.
Right. Okay. Well, I just, it was over and they never mentioned that in their budget discussions over their stuff with us that we did have. It was kind of one specific thing, then all of a sudden that topic came up. I'm not, I mean, I'm not against it, but it's just, I'd like to hear where, since the funds weren't discussed where they were coming from, I just want, and then we find out they have three million additional. I mean, I just, I think we do need to, you know, how they got these initial funds from the get-go, if that made any sense at all. Anyway, we can move on.
And brings us to, yeah, brings us to the VDOT report, Ms. Chairman. Kyle here?
Kyle had to attend the Orange County Board Meeting. He attends board meetings once every quarter. Since he comes here every month, he had to be there at six o'clock and he just left out of here. I told him that I would be more than glad to cover for him since he's going to be late to that meeting as well. Have the floor computer, please.
Thank you, Doug. I hope this gets us extra credit with VDOT.
I think it does. We always work as a team. So before you this evening is the board report. Battlefield District, I-95 exit 126 survey work has begun, has been completed. Preliminary design is underway. That is part of the south bounds on the South Point Parkway. Public hearing tentatively set for March 2019. This was one of our smart scale projects and this is just moving steadily through the process. In the Berkeley District, preliminary engineering updates for Mud Tavern Road improvements. Public hearing was held on May 23rd. There were quite a few attendance there. Mr. Marshall was there. There was a lot of, a lot of interaction, a lot of questions. It was a very well-attended meeting, targeted November 2018 for the start of the right-of-way phase. Project is to be advertised in December. Again, this is a portion of another smart scale project that's moving forward with the preliminary engineering designs. Also in the Berkeley District, the Mud Tavern Road Bridge over I-95 replacement. Completion for the project is scheduled for September 2019. The bridge deck is being poured this week. If you've been out there, you've noticed a lot of the improvements going on on the side roadways, the on-ramps, the off-ramps, and both connecting west and eastbound intersections for the segment of the bridge. And the new bridge is set to open by the end of October.
Wow.
The Chancellor District, Spotswood Furnace Road. I know that this has been one of those ones that's been talked about for a long time. We've had the hard surface enact, trying to get that completed since 2015. We're now at those phases. ENS plan and environmental work has been completed. Drainage work started in May and hard surfacing with the weather we're having, we're hoping to push forward through this so that we can get this done before the end of the year. This is a, this is a big undertaking. In the Cortlandt District, the I-95 safety improvements at Route 3. I know this was an area that was of great concern, design-build project with the Branch Civil War area. The traffic now is in ultimate configuration, working on the signals and the 511 cameras to make sure that those are optimized and making sure that that's working correctly. The project is to be completed by the end of October, so it's well under that phase and it's well under, ahead of the completion date of January, which is, which is huge. Lee Hill District, preliminary engineering updates for the Route 17 Mills Drive Bridge replacement and road widening. As we know, way before we even applied for the smart scale funding, this bridge was identified as one of the bridges that was needing to be replaced, so it'd get us even better scoring with our smart scale project. The project will replace the strategically deficient bridge over I-95 and that's going to widen Route 17 to four lanes to Hospital Boulevard. Advertisement is set for fall 2021. In the Livingston District, Mount Holly Drive, this is a process that I have been working on for the last several years, where it's those last fire, final phases with ENS plan and environmental work. It's been completed. The hard surfacing, this is one of those ones that we're also trying to finish before the fall this year. We're hoping the weather stays as it is. Wolfook Road, we had switched those around to make sure that Wolfook Road, since they're right there in place, they're right there in the direct vicinity, they're going to move forward with these ones as well and go ahead with the environmental work that's completed and do the hard surfacing. As soon as Mount Holly is completed, they're going to move right over to Wolfook. The Salem District, we have no updates at this time. So if there's anyone who has any questions, concerns, or interest for VDOT, I'll be more than glad to take those.
Any comments with the board? I think you're off the hook.
Thank you, guys.
Took it easy on you, too.
I know.
Brings us to the work session on the transportation element of the comprehensive plan.
This is probably where we're going to get you.
I don't know. I think, I think this is going to be good. I think you're going to be glad with this. All right. Can I have the floor computer, please? Thank you very much. This work session that we have here this evening, I know that I've spoke to each one of you individually. I know that we've been working on this for the last year, just trying to get information and feedback, know what your position is, know where we're going with the comprehensive plan. This is the portion of the comprehensive plan known as the Transportation Thoroughfare Plan, updated every five years. We're trying to take a different approach and give you everything that you've requested from staff at this time. So this work session right now, we have three objectives. I think we know what path we're going down and if we're not, we really want to hear from the board and we want to make sure that we're on the right track. The objectives that we want to identify are the transportation projects, review and scoring methodologies for the prioritizations, and discuss the policy to amend and prioritize on working lists, not only the list that's going to be in the thoroughfare plan, but also the list that we're going to be working from. And identifying, our first objective here is to identify the transportation projects. The list that you received in your packet is prioritized project list that have been identified using the methodology which we've discussed and we'll discuss again later. One of the main questions is who can include roads on the list and how it would be done and how we will move forward in maintaining this list. At this point, staff's suggestion is that this list will be a working document that keeps staff and the board current of all projects in the county for any transportation, any transportation road projects. Any inclusions, alterations to any of these lists will require a review and approval from the Transportation Committee and ultimately the Board of Supervisor, ultimately meaning that everything will need a formal approval by the board. So we're going to create this list, which we already have it, it's prioritized in your packet right now. I would love to hear some feedback from what you think about that packet. What do you see and identify as projects? Do you think that that's something that we should be progressing on, the identified list and how we prioritize them? We'll go over the prioritization later, but is this in line with everything that the board has given us direction so far?
Any comments?
Taking that as a...
Let me throw in there real quick. I know majority of these cover the primary roads and, well, we're running out of money for the, you know, there's only a fixed number of the unpaved roads that are going to be paved. I mean, that's bottom line. And there's still a whole lot of them out there in both Berkeley and Livingston and, but with no funding whatsoever.
But let's not get confused. This is not about funding. This is the long-range strategic look for our county. We're pretending like there's trillions of dollars there and what are the roads that we want to, that we have to look into the future of what our ultimate plan is and the design for the county. So with funding aside, this is going to set us up. If we're on top of this, and Mr. Yakubowski has said this numerous times, have these projects in line, so then we go forward with funding. We have already a comprehensive plan that identifies these roads, that has a preliminary or a planning level study or a planning level engineered cost estimate associated with such, so that it puts us in line better for funding. We've done very well with this so far historically and we want to make sure that we are on top of it as we move forward.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marshall?
I've read through the comprehensive work session and just kind of, I know, I know, I kind of, kind of idea where you're going with this with the rural roads and I agree with you. The scoring system that's laid out, it really makes it hard for the backroads that we have in the rural projects that we have in the county to score well, it looks like. Is there some adjustments we can make or do we need to have a separate list?
So all the roads on there, so the rural roads will get maintained, widened. There's several different funding sources. This is, all the roads on the list and you have rural roads there, you see that there are some on the list and the list in front of you identifies some of those needing widening, some of those future out years. So that, those are prioritized as well. Looking at congestion, congestion mitigation. We'll get into how it's scored, but as we, just, just keep in your head before we move on, there's two different ways that we're going to prioritize them.
Okay.
Okay? So keep that, so keep that in your mind. That's later in the presentation, but we had that in mind and staff has looked at it. How can we prioritize them using the scientific scoring system and then using board's discretion to prioritize those as well? And I'll go over that in a few minutes.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything else right now?
Nope, I don't think so.
So the transportation priority list, the projects that the list you see in your packet was created by staff and outlined, all projects identified in Spotsylvania County. Then they're prioritized using the methodology developed by FAMPO, by Kimberly Horn and Associates. This active list will be reviewed and approved by the board and updated as necessary. Any additional review and updates will require authorization approval from the Board of Supervisors. This list provides direction and advancing projects and will further provide support in securing funding. So it's critical to have identified projects, number one. Number two, it's really critical to have a methodology that it was, been designed that the state uses, that FAMPO uses, that we're consistent with. So that's how we have got from the list, put things on the list and then prioritize them according to the methodology. So the scoring and prioritization projects, projects are ranked and they're based in six different categories. And as you see, and Mr. Marshall, you're absolutely correct, it's somewhat unfair. When you look at 30 points for safety, 30 points for congestion, you're taking up a vast majority of your congested area in the different districts that are not necessarily vast majority of your congested area in the different districts that are not necessarily as rural. So when you look at that, you're looking at your scoring based on, and our area, basically, congestion is our number one ranking. Safety is our number two, with both of those being 30 points each. Then we have environmental impacts, public support, implementation, and smart growth. Smart growth is basically getting the most bang for your butt, trying to get as much as we can for our dollars, putting those implementations in those smart areas that gets us movement, safety, and congestion, whether it be rural or whether it be a congested area. So with those scoring and prioritizations, what we have done here is we created, crafted two different ways. Instead of just going down the prioritized approval list and saying the scoring is derived and ranked with a formal review utilizing the six ranked categories, there's 60% being congestion and safety, 40% over the environmental, public support, and smart growth. What is an alternative that we can have in there? Well, prioritization by score of the six ranked and getting that implementation is getting us on the list, getting us on the list and where they are on the list just based by this methodology. The other option is board approval, prioritization by the Spots County Board of Supervisors. So we identify the roads on the list, we score it using the ranking methodology, and ultimately, the board has the authority to change that list, as they always have and as they currently do. And I think that happened just recently with the rural roads. Mr. Benton wanted Dovey Road moved up on the list, and it was right there. It's in the list. It's supposed to be done, but you wanted it moved up because the citizens in that area were requesting that. We have pavement that's going to be in that area. It did end up moving up on the list, but that took a board action. Same thing here. We're going to keep that same policy and that same procedure. They're going to be scored on the list, they're going to be ranked, but the board does have the authority to move those priorities. That, that's our, that takes care of road prioritizations. If you're maybe in those rural areas and you don't score as highly on that methodology, you still have the ability to rank things differently.
Yeah, but Mr. Morgan, that, all those funds, I know I'm going back to funds, but there's no way in the world this board's going to submit the smart scale for unpaved road in Livingston or Berkeley, probably for...
Well, thank goodness, we don't have to worry about our unpaved roads, because those are all funded. They're just knocking them out as soon as VDOT sources can get them done. Those have all been, there's money in the CIP, the funds have been secured. Those unpaved roads are moving forward one at a time. We're just knocking them off.
Well, I haven't seen where the funds are available. They're, they're available for a certain number of them.
Correct. The first, first block is in, I think there's 14 of them, and then the secondary six-year plan is identified, source funding for the next six-year plan. So we keep those funding.
Those were all by bonds?
No, no. Six-year secondary road funds, the SSYP, that'll be coming back to you again in April. In April, I'll present that to the board. The vast majority of that went to unpaved roads again, and that was the board direction to keep the majority of that to unpaved roads. There was a portion of that that also went to Route 606, improvements on the connector road on Route 606. So...
But I thought some bonds were used in there. I'm pretty sure there were, like for Lanes, Lanes Corner.
I don't know specifically off the top of my head.
All right. I'm pretty sure there were.
But staying, staying back on prioritization with thoroughfare plan, those two ways have been identified. And that, that's something that we should really discuss. What, what other options? What do you think should be a different option? I'm hearing the rural roads kind of don't get as much attention that some of the congested road does based on the ranking.
The problem we're having with the rural roads is the, the infrastructure's breaking down. All their covert pipes, they're, most of them are corrugated metal. They're rusting. They're falling apart. I think VDOT has 19 of them on a list right now for repair. That's 19 that they know about. If you drive down Marie Road and pay attention to how many pipe crossings there are on just that one rural road, that's a main thoroughfare for Berkeley District. That and Parklow is how you get in and out of my town. Those, those are, those are your two roads. Mass upon X Church Road is another one where we have issues with the, the shoulders of the road, right past elementary school. It's, it's terrible. If a school bus runs off the road, it's no coming back from there. So it's, it's general maintenance on these rural roads that, you know, we built them, they were, you know, they're there, they've been in place, and everything's just breaking down. So we're going to have to find a way to fix them.
And they, and they certainly don't, when they are fixed, they're not, I'll go out on a limb here, they're not fixed to the quality you get down this thin. I reported, I think, anywhere from six to eight covert pipes this year that were, and most of them were done pretty all right. But you know, when you go out there and you, you about jaw your teeth out of your mouth when you hit the, go over this newly paved, supposedly paved area, and all it is is a bunch of basically ruts.
So we're looking at two different items.
I know. We're getting off track.
But no, I want to, I want to...
I want to voice it. I'm just voicing for my folks.
I just don't want to get confused here. There are different funding sources, and those things need to be made a priority, and I am right on spot with you. I don't disagree with that. And I've got notes here, and I will definitely bring that up with the Virginia Department of Transportation as well. And I know that they have been identified, and some of that infrastructure that's broken down has been identified for replacement. That's different, that's a different funding source. It's totally different than the long-range thoroughfare plan I know that you're used to seeing me and seeing those kind of immediate ratifications. But this, this is the long-range plan, and how do we deal with looking at our roads and our infrastructure for the future? So, I mean, that's something that definitely needs to be identified, but, and, and taking that into consideration, we have to look at all of our roads.
All right. Now, I apologize to you. You're going to have to wrangle me back on course, because I'm probably, I'm probably going to go off a couple more times. I apologize.
So, in your package, you also see the transportation list, and, and this is how it's kind of broken down. I kind of took a little snippet of it there, the existing levels of service, future levels of service, and it goes right on down to your freight use, and trying to make sure that we are in line with how our roads are prioritized, meeting the needs of the county, the needs of the citizens of the county, and the transportation network. And...
Before you go on, I just wanted to be sure it's clear that of the, the various columns that are on the prioritization spreadsheet, those first two, the congestion and safety, that are the 30 points each, those are the ones that, we get the answers to those rankings out of our traffic model. So those are the ones that, that are sort of, they're more scientific in nature. The other category is the environment, the public support, the implementation, and the smart growth are the ones that Doug referred to as the board having more discretion. So as public support is generated or comes forth for a particular road project, the board could prioritize based on the public support that they're hearing from their constituents, move that project up the list. So really, those are the two aspects, the, the sort of scientific generated out of the model for the first two columns, and then the rest of them is where the discretion comes in.
Thank you, Wanda. And so, in developing a policy in our transportation chapter, at the end of the chapter, there's policies, and there's five policies currently, and staff has looked at adopting and developing a sixth policy to establish a formal process and identify not only the projects for advancing transportation projects, but also making sure that their inclusion and where they're strategically placed on the list. The strategies are to include using the ranking methodology, ranking process with a review and approval by the Transportation Committee and the Board of Supervisors, an annual review with the process for additional review upon the Board of Supervisor's vote. Staff sees that the list being reviewed by the board each August, forwarded to the Transportation Committee for review and recommendation in September, and then back to the Board of Supervisors for ultimate approval. How we're trying to look at this as being a transportation thoroughfare plan with a running list of projects, a process that these new roads can be entered, included on the list, and how they're prioritized on the list, and how we keep that as a working document associated with the comprehensive plan. So going back to the first slide here, the, the three objectives for this evening was identifying the transportation projects, and I want you to collectively look at that and see if there's any other identified projects that you, you wish to have included. Reviewing the scoring methodology for, for projects, do we want to change that? Do we like the input? Did the board, do you like that the board has the discretion to change things, or do you want to keep it completely scientific? Or do you want to change that methodology? And discuss a policy for amending that list once we have an approved list with the thoroughfare plan. And at this time, I will receive as much feedback as you can give me. If I'm on track, that'd be great. If I'm not, please let me know. You'll see at the bottom of your list there, there's some that's not prioritized. The bottom of your list identifies projects that have been identified before that are not on there. On the top of your list, you'll see that there's projects prioritized, and there's funding and where they stand in the process.
I like the ability of the board to change and move things as, you know, complaints and stuff from the citizenry as we get these things. I don't know. Like I say, if we don't, I know the Berkeley and Livingston's district, other than Route 1 area for Berkeley, Livingston's not going to get anything, any widening of 208 or anything, not in 100 years.
Okay.
You know, that, that widening was supposed to, the widening that they did do was supposed to run up past the Spotsylvania High School, but they ran out of money, so we got what we got. And you know, this caused a cluster around, you know, Spotsy High. But you know, we can, we can let $800,000 of proffered funds go for a 20-minute wait for kids down at Riverbend, so, and let a contractor say, a project cost $500,000 without even getting an estimate from VDOT. So that's the frustrating part for me, especially in a rural portion of the county where, you know, I struggle just to, just to get roads that have been pothole after pothole repair for 18 years, and you still go down it, and it feels like you're going across plowfield, you know, to actually be resurfaced and redone. And, and no guarantees when that would, maybe another 18 years. So that's, that's why I'd like to keep it at the discretion of the board to make some changes if possible. Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. In the list here, do we have the projects from the bond referendum? The super ramp, that, that whole thing that the voters voted on a few years back? I see we have pieces.
There's pieces that have been approved, that have moved forward.
Well, I, I would like to think that if we have a bond referendum with items that are in there, that...
Add those to the list as well.
They should actually be at the top of the list because they actually have funding. And they...
Well, only the pieces that have funding you see on there. The pieces that we actually have funding are identified on the list. The 126 improvements, the off-band improvements, the Route 1 improvements up to South Point Parkway, and the Bridge Over 95 and Mills Road 17 improvements, those are all identified because they did have funding.
Well, we have, we have bond approval to do them.
We do, we do.
We haven't taken that out yet, but we do have the approval, which I think is, is clearly should move those projects up.
Okay.
Also, the ones that were identified in the, the traffic studies on 217 and 404.
Those are absolutely going to be identified. Those, those are going to be listed as well. Those two corridor studies are just finishing up as, as we went to the Transportation Committee meeting last month, July, July with an update from 208, Route 1, 208 corridor, and the Route 2 and 17 corridor. We had some preliminary, most of it was finished. I think that they're almost final with those.
Okay.
They had enough information that they could give us some estimates, and we worked with VDOT on those to submit several projects for smart scale in the Route 2 and 17 corridor as well as 208 and Route 1.
Right. Because in, in the big scheme of things, VDOT is still responsible for roads, but we have delved into it. And so, a lot of these roads might not need going from two lanes to four lanes, but what we did at the 404 and 217 studies, looking how to move traffic through, so we don't need to take Route 1 to six or eight lanes, we just need to improve the intersections. So I think more of a priority needs to be put on traffic flow and not necessarily expansion of roads. And I think that that actually addresses the, the rural part of the, of the county, which all you have to do actually is just wait a little while, because with redistricting, you're probably going to move up to south of Route 3 there pretty soon, just because of the population mix. But the, the portions down, and down in Livingston and Berkeley, and I'm not sure who has it, but where the dollar store was just put in, and you have 601 and then 601 the other way, you know, turn lanes in there, you know, those kind of things that would help traffic move. You don't need that to be four lanes all the way to the lake necessarily if you have traffic just moving through, because you're moving people out of the way. So those are the type of, of things I would like to start looking at. I know that we need to put them on the list, and that's fine, but also, what can we also use? Because there's so much money that is out there, CMAC money and whatever else from FAMPO and, and other, I know, I say there's lots of money sitting out there, but...
Where did you find that?
There's, there's, there's lots of pots out there, let's say.
There are.
And, and we can at least try to get our, our hand into every single one of them. But you do that when you have projects that you know you want to do and you want to move forward with. And so I think that the other thing that we need to really keep in mind, and, you know, I, again, we're getting into the traffic business more and more and more and more. We need to also start looking at how these projects interact with each other. Mass upon X is a mess, but you put in the connection road from the Capital One Buildings to Jermana, you know, maybe some of these other things get taken off the list or, or get moved down. That is, I, I think it needs to be a flowing chart where...
That's exactly what our goal is.
Okay. Where it's not necessarily whoever's sitting up here can, can move things because they want to move them. Not saying that you shouldn't have the ability to at least bring it up, but that is, should be the overall goal, is to move traffic through our county. And however, we need to get to that point with the limited funds, but the many options that we might have, is what I think we need to do. But I would really like to see the stuff that we already have with bonds put, you know, a little bit higher. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
All right. We will probably be wrapping this up and going to the Planning Commission. Well, not anytime soon, probably next to December-ish.
My suggestion is to take a look at this list, take a look at our thoroughfare plan list, and, and any other projects that you're aware of. There are a couple of projects that Doug mentioned that are listed at the bottom. These would be new roads. One of them is, is the Spotsylvania Parkway Extension that's been discussed before and hasn't really moved forward. Another one is Chancellor Road Extension between Old Plank and Plank Road, and that's actually, if you look at the old Otter Connector maps, that was actually a little piece of it as well. So ultimately, if the board wants to move forward and consider those roads again, we're going to need to get them into the thoroughfare plan and prioritize them on the list. But what I'd recommend is that board members contact Doug with any thoughts, additional thoughts after we conclude this meeting today, additional road projects that you're interested in being considered, so that those can be taken to the Transportation Committee, reviewed, ranked, and then brought back to the board ultimately for final approval.
Hey, Wanda, since I got you, can we look at requiring better turn lanes, longer turn lanes, when some of these businesses come in and some of these subdivisions? I mean, it's like the, you know, folks up there tell me 100, 150 feet, 200 feet, and you, you can't really visualize it real good. And then when it's put in, you're like, I can't even get a fire truck parked in there. Can we look at maybe expanding that a little further?
The turn lanes? Okay, we'll look into that.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
And I think it's, that when it's a taper versus a full turn lane, it seems to me like that has been, that has come up as an issue.
Yes. The taper thing throws you all out.
Taper versus a turn lane. Okay.
Yep. I think it's going to be very wise for us to start really maybe boosting, if that's even what I'm boosting, boosting, you know what I mean, that requirement.
Normally, when it's in Virginia Department of Transportation, right away, the SSR requirements would kick in. So if it's a public road, if it's in VDOT right away, VDOT will do the, the number of vehicle trips, the accounts, and what kind of vehicles going in there. It would fall under the SSR requirements. Now, if it's ours and it's on private roads, or if it's coming out of a business...
Well, there you go, Doug. And you take this to VDOT, because I'm telling you that what they've done, they've done a little bit better here recently, but like the Route 3... little bit better here recently, but like the Route Three little turns they used to put in, I could tell immediately it wasn't going to be enough. I think Andorra Drive was one, up there at Brock Road, they initially had these short little squibs. It was like, can't even get two cars in that, and here there's Route Three westbound. I mean, I mean, I'm not the sharpest tool in the, you know, in the shed, but I, I have some common sense and can look at things and say, that ain't going to work. And if it, I don't know what their engineers are doing, but they're not coming out, or in actually looking. I, I don't know what the deal is, but they've got, they've got to do better on these turn lanes, instead of every time we turn around, we're requesting one to be extended, just like, I think, either last meeting and one before last, we, right there at the, oh shoot, the Wawa, where they're turning, or close to it, where they're turning into Spotsylvania Parkway, you know, no, Spots, uh, South Point Parkway. They've already expanded that one. I mean, where cars were lined up out into the travel lane. It don't take a rocket scientist to figure this stuff out. I mean, I, I don't know what they're using, but whatever they're using ain't working. Not for our population, and for the amount of vehicles, especially down towards the east end here. And that tapering mess is a, I gotta watch my language, a crock. It's not working. You, you can't even get a fire truck parked in there. Yeah, I mean-
Don't disagree with you. It, it is, it is a challenge, and I know what, when they do widening, and they are trying to do improvements, we're trying to get as much as we can for as amount of money that we have. And sometimes if we get a taper and a half of a turn lane, you know, some of that stuff is approved beyond my control, and some of that stuff is approved through Virginia Department of Transportation. So when it's in the right way, I do not review the roadway plans for VDOT, but I will certainly start paying closer attention to it.
What was the, I do have one you can take to them, right in front of Livingston Elementary School. The turn lanes into the fire station. Not only are the school buses using them, but the fire trucks coming in and out of there, you can't, I might as well stay out in travel lane, put turn in there.
I will let Kyle know that. I'll put that on the VDOT report.
It's a, it's a joke.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Didn't let you, let you off as easy this time.
It's a thoroughfare plan.
I know, I know. You gotta wrangle me back in.
Thank you very much.
Just when you see roads go for, ever since I was a little baby, you know, not touched, and same stuff happening, it's just frustrating. Sorry, Doug.
Which brings us to the FY 2018 Preliminary Year End Financial Report and Recommended Carryover Requests. Good evening, Finance.
Good evening.
Long time no see.
That's right. As Bonnie loads up a few things, I just wanted to say thank you to Finance staff. This is a crazy time of year for us. As you'll see, the next two presentations, one is closing one fiscal year, and the next is starting to look at the fiscal year yet to come, while we still work in the fiscal year. So, this is the preliminary fiscal year 18 end of year report. It is unaudited. The accounting staff is working with the auditors to finalize the report, and that will be brought back to you at the second meeting in November, which is the meeting where we typically present with the school board for the joint session. So, without further ado, Bonnie has a presentation for you for this end of year report, so.
And before I get started on the end of your report, I did want to address a couple of comments that were made. Mr. Benton, you asked about whether the unpaved roads were bond funded, and the fair unpaved roads, which are the projects for which we already have money and have paid VDOT to do the work. Yes, those were bond funded. You also asked if the connector road was bond funded. And yes, that was at least partially bond funded, if I remember correctly. I think we did move a small portion of proffer to, and to allow for that project to be moved forward, but the majority of it is bond funded. And then, Mr. Ross, I was thinking back to my response to your questions about CSA, and I just want to be entirely clear, because I don't think I was before. I cannot say for certain that 100% of those CSA costs are education related. I can say for certain that historic trends indicate that 60%, at least 60%, is related to school-approved individualized education plans, which are IEPs.
Okay.
We do know that another portion of those costs are related to foster care, and I do not know if that foster, if those foster care costs tie 100% to education.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, to clarify that.
Thank you. And, and that cost is between 50 and 60,000 per student, or per child, correct?
Um, I don't, I don't have that information.
I believe it is.
Okay.
That's okay, Bonnie.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, now I can turn my attention to the end of your report. And again, as Mary said, this is preliminary, though, though I certainly do hope that it's So, the first slide that I'm going to talk about here is, this is, this is simply how revenues for fiscal year 18's general fund compared to expenditures. This is, this is in no way comparing budget to actual, it's just actual revenues for fiscal year 18 were $266.7 million. You can see there at the top what makes up that $266.7 million, and actual expenditures and net transfers out were $256.6 million. So when you look only at revenues in and expenditures out from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, revenues exceeded expenditures by $10.1 million. That, that is, those are true numbers there, but in my opinion, this does not give the true, the true snapshot of how finances performed for fiscal year 18, specifically relative to where we ended the year with the fund balance. And I know that's always, tends to be our focus. So, moving on to the next slide, I hope to, to show you that progression. Fund balance net of certain reservations at the end of fiscal year 18 was $72.1 million. Of that amount, we are recommending carryforward items to you tonight, totaling $2.4 million for the general fund. And then, as we already discussed very briefly, we expect the schools' carryover request coming to you in November to be $3.9 million. When those two carryover items for the county and the schools are backed out, the fund balance net of reservations at the end of fiscal year 18 totaled $65.9 million. And the breakdown of that is important here, in the yellow box at the bottom. The policy level fiscal stability reserve of 11% totals $47.4 million at the end of fiscal year 18. The budget stabilization reserve, which has a cap of $5 million, and we're working towards that $5 million cap, stands at $4.2 million at the end of fiscal year 18. The health insurance reserve, which is the equivalent of three months of claims and incurred but not reported expenditures, totals $4.3 million. The economic opportunities reserve is a flat reserve of $2 million. And then that leaves the amount greater than these reserve requirements at $8 million at the end of fiscal year 18. And before I leave this slide and go on to the next, I do want to note that, I recall that there was some confusion in the community last year about the number that ended the year being greater than reserve requirements. Some address the board making reference to last year's $12 million being on top of the prior year's X million dollars, being on top of the prior year's Y million dollars. And that's, that's not how it works. Contrary to that, the $8 million that's shown here is an ongoing tally, it's a running total or cumulative balance from year to year. This $8 million is not on top of last year's $12 million. This $8 million starts with last year's $12 million, but then we had some uses of, and some adds to, that amount. And so, the end result, the net result at the end of fiscal year 18 is $8 million. And I think that's going to become clearer in the next couple of slides, particularly the second slide I'm going to show you here. So how do we get to this point? I'm going to start with the third quarter estimates first, and work forward from there, and then I'm going to go back and show you the full year for fiscal year 18. So, when I reported the third quarter estimated fund balance to you, we projected it at $5.5 When we look at how fiscal year 18 actually performed, fiscal year 18 revenues and transfers in were actually about $2 million greater than what I had projected at the third quarter. The bulk of that is in real estate, though there is some increase in CSA and DSS, state revenues as well. Those have a corresponding increase in expenditures, too. And then, interestingly enough, we've had trouble for quite a few years now appropriately projecting the personal property revenue. And you will recall that we've been bumping that projection up, and bumping it up, trying to get closer and closer. For fiscal year 18, the personal property revenue was actually $700,000 less than I projected at third quarter. So I think some of those, some of those corrections that I've been trying to make in the projections are starting to work, and maybe a little bit too much. So I'm going to have to take another look at that as we continue to project fiscal year 19, and certainly as we project fiscal year 20 revenue. On the expense side, expenditures were actually about a half a million dollars less than I had projected at third quarter, with health insurance and turnover being the largest change. You might recall from that report that I had made no assumptions of savings for health insurance as part of the third quarter, but we did experience savings. Overall, there were no changes in reservations from third quarter to fourth quarter actuals, and there was very little change in fiscal year 19 budget use from third quarter to fourth quarter. All of those are additive, as you start with the 5.5, and add in the 2 point million in additional revenue, the $500,000 in expenditure savings, and we get to the $8 million estimated fund balance greater than policy requirements at the end of fiscal year 18. And this is a slide that I was hoping would show you how, this is not $8 million in addition to last year's 12, 12 million. I start at the top here with fiscal year 2017's ending fund balance estimate greater than policy reservations of $12 million. For all of fiscal year 18, revenues exceeded projections by $8.7 million, that's 3.3%. That was across, those increases were across about 70 different revenue sources, with real estate being the largest. And a portion of that real estate was due to the adopted tax, real estate tax rate being 1.66 cents greater than equalization, which obviously hadn't been factored into the fiscal year 18 budget when we did that budget. On the expense side, we had expenditure savings for the full year of 1.4 million, or 1.1%. And the largest sources of that 1.4 million savings were turnover savings, health insurance savings, and contingency. Changes in reservations from fiscal year 17 to 18 reduced the $12 million by 3.3 million. And then you'll recall that the fiscal year 19 budget assumed a use of $9.7 million of that $12 million, the bulk of which was an additional transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund to reduce the amount of borrowing we needed to do for fiscal year 19 projects. Net transfers and miscellaneous adjustments reduced the $12 million by 1.1 million. The bulk of that is certainly the transfers, not the miscellaneous adjustments. And so, there again, I'm showing that we end the fiscal year 18 with an estimated fund balance greater than policy requirements of $8 million. So the, the only action that we're looking for from you this evening is to approve the requested carryover for the county funds. There is no requested carryover at this time for the school funds. And you're familiar with this process. It's a process through which departments submit requests to carryover expedited funding from one year to the next. It's certainly not meant to be a second bite at the budget process, and we do not through this process create a contingency within any given department budget. And it's not meant to serve as a reward to be spent in subsequent years for having saved funds during the course of the prior year. Instead, it is the intention of this process to allow for the carryover and reappropriation of obligations or otherwise restricted funding. And this year is the first year in quite a while that the budget staff is actually recommending all of the requested carryover, and that's, that certainly is attributable to the departments really adhering to the criteria to meet, meet the carryover process. And I appreciate that they made that effort to do that, to limit their requests to the, meeting their criteria. So the fiscal year 18 requested county carryover is a total of $2.7 million. About 500,000 of that 2.7 was obligated in fiscal year 18 on purchaser orders or otherwise obligated. And then 2.2 million of it is grant funding or otherwise restricted funding, like forfeiture, seizure, or state fire programs funding for fire and rescue. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, we are looking for your action on the requested carryover. And that, the requested carryover list was included in the novice agenda packet, but it's also stapled here to the back of the presentation that was handed out.
Any comment from the board? There you have it.
Make a motion.
Make, make a motion to approve the carryover of the 2.696837 of county funds. An excellent job, Bonnie.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor for $2,696,837 for the carryover requests. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McCollum?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Chanty?
Aye.
Chair, aye.
Thank you.
Next is the introduction to the FY 20 to 24 CIP process.
Yes, so you might recall, a couple of meetings ago, I, I presented a modified budget and CIP process to you that needed to be, was necessarily modified this year to allow for staff time, for there to be staff time for the one solution or new financial system work to occur. I also mentioned at that time, and also want to reiterate tonight, and that's what this whole, that's what this whole presentation is about, that staff really wanted to get the, get boards' comments and concerns and questions related to the CIP and CIP projects more in advance this year of the recommended budget and CIP, which will come to you in February. And so, we're hoping to engage you in a number of settings, a couple of board meetings like this, and then also later on this month, we're hoping to offer some two-by-two meetings with two board members at a time, meeting with the CIP Working Group, who's been working on developing this, this upcoming recommended CIP. And really, get your thoughts and questions, and what you hope to see in the recommended CIP when it comes forward to the board in February. So, before I get started on this, I do want to note that it is intentional that government, general government facilities projects don't appear as part of this presentation. A presentation specific to those projects is forthcoming at the second meeting in October. It is also on purpose that I'm not showing any funding sources for these projects at this time. As our work on the CIP progresses, and the projects and timing are fine-tuned, finance staff will work to determine the funding sources, whether those be cash, bonds, interest earnings, proffers, donations, or some combination thereof for the projects. Project estimates that are shown in the following slides here tonight are very much preliminary at this time. Those, too, will be fine-tuned as the CIP Working Group continues its work and works towards the recommended CIP in February. Finally, it is on purpose that transportation projects don't show in the listing of projects that I'm going to go through tonight. And the transportation projects initially will be discussed with the Transportation Committee with its meeting this coming Thursday, and then we will certainly come back to you with various iterations of transportation plan as appropriate. This evening is an initial step in this process, where the goal is to remind you of out-year projects planned in the existing CIP, alert you to a few new projects that have been requested, and to obtain from you any initial reactions you have. I'm not seeking any, any board action at this time. I'm not seeking any board action at this time. With that, I'll move to the first, the first iteration of projects, and those are the information technology projects. There are two slides on this, so I'd like to get through two slides here for information technology before I pause and give you a chance to ask Ms. Reed any questions, Reeve, any questions that you might have, or ask us any funding questions that you might have. So the way this, the way these slides are going to be set up is obviously, you see the project, the requested project there on the left-hand side. The five-year cost on the second column to the right, and then the continued column really is there to indicate, has funding been approved for this project in a prior year? For instance, the CAD project, funding has been approved for that in prior years, and it was intentional that we spaced that out over time because we knew that the cash flow was going to be conducive to spacing the funding out over time. So this $1 million is planned in fiscal year 20, but is going to be added to funding that was previously approved. And then the new question mark column is pretty self-explanatory. If there's a yes in that column, that project is a new request for the upcoming five years. So the CAD project, I've already talked about that a little bit. I'm not going to, as part of this brief, go into the project descriptions. That was included in your packet, and certainly, project managers are here, and you can ask them about their projects. I'm just going to basically go down the list here, and then at the end of these couple of slides, give you an opportunity to ask questions about the technology projects. The Chancellor Tower replacement has a placeholder budget right this minute of five, 1 million over the five-year period. Livingston Tower replacement is a new requested project this year of this five-year CIP period, totaling $1 million. The Next Generation 911 project is going to be a mandated project, federally and state mandated. The project costs associated with that is TBD right now, and we're working through that. Radio replacement program, in-car replacement, camera replacement program, body camera replacement program, those are all new to the CIP this year, and it's really to establish a intentional replacement program for these various capital items. Replacement computers and servers, that's an ongoing project. And then the financial and HR system replacement, that project is ongoing right now, and $631,000 is planned in fiscal year 20 to complete that project. Personal property system replacement is a project for which you've already approved funding in previous years, and this is expected to be the last piece of funding associated with that. The cloud strategy implementation is estimated at $250,000. Business tax software update and state income tax program replacements are software replacements for work that is going on in the Commissioner of Revenues office. Believe it or not, it's going to soon be time to upgrade and replace the time management system that was done two years ago, a year ago? In the recent past?
Yes.
Yes. And then the VITA base mapping program is an ongoing program. And then new this year, like the other component replacement programs that you saw on the previous slide, there's a plan for security camera replacement throughout the organization. So with that, I'm going to pause and let you ask Jane any questions that you might have about the information technology projects at this point.
Questions from the board? Jane, why do we, why do we have Livingston Tower? I know Chancellor Tower has some issues.
Yes, the Livingston Tower, we identified some structural cracks in the footers. We're having it evaluated now. The million dollars put in there is a precautionary planning measure in case we need to replace the tower. We may be able to repair without replacing, but we wanted to make sure that we had it in the CIP instead of making it an emergency replacement.
Good thinking. Thank you.
Couple of questions.
Ms. Marshall?
With the radio replacement, the in-car cameras and the body cameras, I see the lifespan is estimated at five years. Just because it reaches its five-year mark doesn't mean we're taking it out of service, correct?
No, sir. This, again, allows us to begin to plan for that replacement cycle. The radios, particularly for public safety, by the time we get through this cycle, will be at their seven-year mark, which is when we begin to replace some radios that just continue to have issues. That number will be refined. We're still working out a lot of the numbers. Fram is just recently going to be getting some new radios, so that will adjust that schedule out. But we want to make sure we've got money, particularly for public safety, particularly for our school buses, in the budget and plan for replacements, because as you can see, it can be, can get very costly if we're not planning for it. It just helps stabilize and level out the budget.
Right, this gives us a, this gives us a baseline to work off of.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I understand. And also, the time management replacement, how long will it take to implement that? Are we basically just renewing the contract that we already have, or is it going to be a?
We actually have been renewing the contract. The vendor has notified us that this product will eventually go end of life and end of support within the next two to three years. So that's why it's a new project this year, so we can begin the planning phases for some type of a replacement system.
So we will be having to get 2020 a brand-new, new system?
We will be working with a new system. We just don't know what yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can you?
What is VITA, mapping system?
VITA is the Virginia Technology, the state technology group. We get all of our GIS maps, all the aerials that you see on our websites. We work through them. When they do the flyers, they do the entire state, and it just gives us access to a larger contract for a better price.
Thank you. Think you have the hook? Thank you, Jane.
Moving on to the solid waste projects, there are a few of these. The active gas collection in additional cells, that has been planned in the CIP for a number of years. Convenience center paving, this is an ongoing project where we allow each year a certain amount of money to complete paving upgrades or just maintenance at various convenience centers. Then the mandated landfill development, this 12 and a half million dollars is certainly over the five years. It's not, it's not all 12 and a half million in fiscal year 20. That's planned, and Ben can tell you a lot more about that than I ever could. And then, normal ongoing replacement of disposal and collection equipment to keep the, keep the operations going.
I'll go ahead. Hey, Ed. How many cells are we at now at Livingston?
I believe they're on, I believe they're on cell five. I think there's two, yeah, I think there's two closed, two cells that are actually closed, and then there's a couple of cells that are actually partially are still being constructed. The 12 million there is to close another cell and open another cell over the next five-year period.
We're not going through them that quick?
No, no. The expected life of that landfill should be 75 to 100 years.
All right. All right. And we're still pursuing maybe some Newark technology, or maybe joint ventures with the city or something where we can?
Definitely looking for other technologies as they become available. That active gas collection is to continue collecting gas from some of the cells that have already been closed, and eventually, when we have enough gas collection and the quality of gas is such that we could produce electricity, that would certainly be an option in the future.
All right. And what, how long does a cell have to sit in before you can actually do something on that, on top of those things?
That I would have to check. I don't know.
I just, because I know when Livingston was, was, I guess, when the plans were put in place to do that, I think the long range was for parks and for
Right.
...activities on, in that area.
Yeah, there are, and I think Kevin can address that when he's up here as well. I think there is a plan for a park there in the future, but I don't know if it's actually on top of the cells. I think there's land set aside there for, for parks.
All right. I appreciate it. Kevin, you don't have to come up. I won't put you on there. He tried to put you on the, on the spot there. All right, sorry, Bonnie.
Kevin may be up next because we're on the Parks and Rec side. So that's a good segue. So in Parks and Rec, we have planned the Belmont Passive Park project of $420,000, Livingston Community Center, $715,000, the Nye River Park at $3.4 million, and then two lighting replacement projects, still TBD on the costs related to those. We're still working that out.
Go ahead, Ms. Skinner.
I just want, Lee Hill Park Lightning Replacement, we're talking about Lee Hill School Drive to park off of that. Okay.
Mr. Ross?
I just had a question. So I don't, I don't know what's going on in Livingston, but I do know that the Cortland District lost its community center, which we still have 600,000 set aside for. Is there any plan to replace that in the next five years? And we may be doing it out of Lick Run. I don't know.
Everybody's looking around to see who's going to come up.
We are looking to replace that community center, and there are some options, one of which would be the old Station 5 for one. Lick Run is certainly an option as well. So we are continuing to look for a replacement for that community.
Got you. Should that be on this list or not?
We can add it to the list, but I don't have a location for it as yet.
Sure.
But it is a five-year CIP, and I would estimate that within that five years, we'll have a project to replace that.
Okay. Well, if there's no objection, I'd like that added to the list, if possible.
Hey, Mr. Brooks, on your passive park for Belmont, what does that include again? That doesn't even sound good, passive park.
Basically, a passive park is a park that doesn't have athletic fields. It's going to have walking trails, parking lot, just a natural setting. It's something we want to talk to you about at the two-by-two meetings, too.
Okay. Can you, I'll go ahead and give you heads up. Can you go ahead and maybe get some costs for maybe a tennis court, maybe one baseball soft, softball slash soccer court? Yeah, the original design, I think.
There was work done previously for the Belmont Passive, for the Belmont Park, not a passive park, with a ball field, tennis court, plus, I think, a pavilion area also. I can't remember how it was. Yeah, it was a picnic shelter. It was basically a baseball field that was going to be open, that had a rectangular area as well.
Kind of like the, the one off Park, Post Oak.
More similar to Cosner with the open end.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to at least see some costs on that. I mean, there's nothing really out, out that way.
Okay, moving on to fire and rescue. We have a number of projects. None of these is new this year. Fire Training and Logistics Center, Replacement Company III, a new Company 12, and then additional funding to complete the bunk room addition and renovation at Company VI. Funding was originally budgeted for that in fiscal year 18, and it appears that there's going to be additional funding needed to complete it. And then replacement of fire and EMS equipment, that's a typical cost that we have from year to year. And then CPR delivery devices. This is the next phase of getting those devices in each piece of equipment. Finally on our list for tonight is schools, and I really don't have any information on the schools at this point, other than what was in the CIP last year. The schools draft CIP is anticipated to be received in early November, and that's their usual timeframe for adopting their initial CIP and providing the county with that information. So these TBDs will be filled in once we get that information.
Can you go back to fire rescue one more time? Yep. Chandler, I think we asked one, I think, Mr. Kevin, speaking out during, I think Mr. Marshall had suggested we take a look at Company VI, the ad renovation. We hadn't seen anything or heard anything on that. It's been, been mentioned a number of times, but we have not seen where that is or what's going on. There he is.
Just a brief update. So been working with General Services to work on the initial conceptual design. I believe there's been some progress in moving towards the actual engineering for that, and we'll move forward in the next several months for getting, getting the drawings, moving forward with trying to put it out for bid to determine what the actual cost is going to be. But estimations, as Bonnie was saying, are higher than what we had initially anticipated.
Now, all you're doing is adding a, just a renovation and adding some bunk rooms?
It's basically, it's a, it's really a complete remodel of the living quarters, basically to provide enough, you know how tight it is right now. You can barely fit two crews in there. And basically, planning for a future expansion, that's one of our busiest stations. So knowing that in the future, with call volumes continuing to increase in that area, to be able to actually have enough space to house two fire crews and probably two medic crews in that same building, instead of having to look at building another facility in close proximity to that one.
Now, you still running two, this is off topic, I apologize, but just real quick, are you still running two EMS out of there?
We do not. Because of vacancies, we don't have the staffing to do that right now, so we are currently running only one medic unit along with the ladder out there.
Okay. Thank you.
And then in terms of the budget timeline for the CIP, tonight, obviously, is the initial CIP concepts presentation. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the week of October 29th, I think Nikki's going to be looking at setting up on your calendars a couple of meetings, two-by-twos, where hopefully two of you at a time will meet with the CIP working group, and we can delve into these projects a little bit more if you have questions or concerns. Then there will be another of these follow-up concept meetings on November 15th, and depending upon how that goes and what comes out of that, we may have a third one. Of course, if you don't want that, we don't have to do that, on November 27th. Then ultimately, on February 12th, Mark is going to present his recommended budget and CIP to the board. At the end of March, as usual, we'll have the Budget, CIP, and Tax Rate Public Hearing, and then your budget calendar calls for you to adopt the budget and CIP on April 9th. So unless there are any more questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Chairman, we're a half hour behind for the public hearing scheduled at 6:30, or we can go to the Comcast report from Ms. Reeve.
We'll just keep rolling. Let's do the, let's go ahead and do the public hearing.
Go ahead and do the public hearing. Call this public hearing on SUP 18-007, B Farms Development LLC, Franklin's Crossing Assisted Living Facility in the Lee Hill voting district.
Hey, Mr. Taylor, I may throw a wrench into work, so just suggested that, because we're, we're on past the public presentation time for the second half. Do you want to try to do, do that and then jump?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, yes. Let's pick up public presentations while staff is getting oriented. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Yes, let's pick up public presentations while staff is getting oriented. Do we have anyone signed up?
No.
No one signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody that did not sign up for the public presentations, not for the public hearing, but public presentations, that wishes to come up and speak now? Seeing no more closed public presentations. Now the public hearing.
Still, uh, getting a few things organized here, but I suppose I can go ahead and get the show on the road. My name is Patrick White. I'm with the Planning Department. This case is SUP 18-7. It's for Franklin's Crossing, which is a special use case for an assisted living facility. I have a relatively short PowerPoint presentation. The applicant is present and also has a PowerPoint presentation. Thank you for your patience. The applicant Beef Farms Development LLC is requesting a special use approval for 125-bed, three-story assisted living facility on tax parcel 25A14C. It's an unaddressed R2-zoned property. The subject property is located at the end of River Meadows Way, a little over half a mile from the ways intersection with Tidewater Trail. Staff's recommending denial of the application. The Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions by a five-two vote on September 5th, 2018, adding a condition that the applicant obtain a secondary gated emergency access point prior to site plan approval. This condition was modified following county attorney review, which found that the county could not require obtaining another access as a condition of approval. The condition has been revised and is included in your app, in your packet as approved by the county attorney's office. The applicant has provided a letter of support from the neighboring property owner of the Mobile Home Park supportive of that condition. Also during the planning commission meeting, the applicant's representative questioned why staff did not object to three other special use standards of review. Staff considered that question and concurred that while staff focused on the location of the facility in standard six, the standards four and seven contribute towards that determination, that the location is inappropriate, which was standard six. So your staff report has been amended to include some expanded analysis of this. The Planning Commission did not have the benefit of that analysis when they voted, so should the board wish the Planning Commission to reconsider, the board may refer to the case back should they desire. Onward with the presentation. The subject property is depicted in red on screen. The property is 10 acres large. It's enclosed by the Rappahannock River, River Meadows to the southeast, Tidewater Village to the northwest, and the River Heights Mobile Home Park to the southwest. The proposed access to the 120-home River Meadows neighborhood is depicted in orange. Pursuant to the Planning Commission's recommendation, the applicant has obtained permission from the property owner from River Heights Mobile Home Park to have a secondary gated entrance accessible through the green path on the screen. The secondary access point would be used in the event access via River Meadows Way is blocked. These accesses are of heightened importance for this case due to the proposed use and its location. Assisted faci- living facilities are more like medical facilities than a traditional residential neighborhood. And they have a high demand for emergency services, such as ambulances, due to the elderly population they serve. It's logical that different facilities will have varying levels of these calls according to the market they are serving. But on average, fire, rescue, and emergency management data, here from Spotsylvania County, demonstrates that a facility of this size could be estimated to generate 239 E911 calls for service annually, or 20 calls a month, or one call every 1.5 days. With the exception of a stretch of land immediately to the southeast, all of the adjacent property to the subject property has a future land use designation of mixed use, which supports higher density development of varying types, and it's intended to create a walkable environment for residents to work, shop, play, and live. The subject parcel and all adjacent par- properties are zoned R2. The applicant's GDP proposes a three-story, 125-bed, 57,000-square-foot assisted living facility. The applicant has proposed transitional screens to the southwest and southeast. The screen to the southeast is also proposed to have a vinyl fence. A sidewalk connection is proposed to River Meadows along with a cul-de-sac, which would provide sufficient ability for vehicles to turn around prior to reaching an access control gate that would ultimately restrict access to and from the facility, uh, along River Meadows Way. The applicant has also proposed onsite amenities for residents, which include a nature, a nature viewing area on the Rappahannock, a seating area at high ground, uh, which would likely have a great view of the river. The applicant has submitted a depiction of the facility with the textual description of the varying architectural elements as displayed before you. When reviewing a special use permit, staff looks at eight standards. It's not unusual for staff to have a concern regarding some of these items and to propose a condition to mitigate the impacts. The predominant concern here regarding this case is, is related to condition six, or standard six, location. Unlike other assisted living facilities within the county, which are typically located near arterial or collectors, sometimes intersections, some of those are signalized. The location of this proposed use is at the back of an existing and established neighborhood with one primary point of access, River Meadows Way. River Meadows Way is a local V-dot maintained street which provide, provides access to 120 homes in the neighborhood. Forty-seven of those homes have a driveway onto River Meadows Way. Vehicles driven by emergency responders will likely exceed the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour on the .6-mile segment of River Meadows Way, for a total of 1.2 miles to and from this facility. Emergency responders could be called any time, any time of day or night, during peak traffic hours, during school pickup or drop-off times, et cetera. It's foreseeable that the urgency of the emergency responders driving to and from the facility will conflict with otherwise predictable traffic speeds and household behavioral patterns, patterns common to an established neighborhood. These conflicts could adversely affect safety of residents within the neighborhood, which is standard four, and they could additionally adversely affect the safety of drivers, which is standard seven. Before you, our staff's findings in favor. The proposal provides housing for seniors, has relatively low demands for other, other public services. It generates jobs. It improves the tax pace, provides open and green space. Additionally, as noted by the applicant's representative, there are few assisted living facility options in the vicinity, the nearest being in Fredericksburg. And the findings against are largely limited to the three concerns previously identified, predominantly that the location of the facility and the potential safety and vehicular conflicts arising from the location. Drivers responding to an emergency onsite will exceed the speed limit in the neighborhood as 125 households, and the proposed use would unexpectedly and negatively impact residents in the neighborhood. Although a condition is in place to require a traffic calming analysis, there's no guarantee that traffic calming would be found to be warranted, and if it was warranted, that those measures themselves could further challenge responder accessibility. There's no recommended condition that could fully mitigate the introduction of this use on the neighborhood. There are, however, 11 recommended conditions in your approval resolution. And the applicant has voluntarily, voluntarily proposed three additional conditions. That the landowner operator shall develop an emergency management and communications plan with county FRIM prior to certificate of occupancy. That the landowner operator shall have a trained emergency medical physician onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that the facility will not provide memory care services. Although staff's analysis and recommendation remains the same, staff acknowledges that the proposed new conditions, particularly number two, having an onsite physician 24/7, may reduce incident call volume. And having an additional point of access through the mobile home neighborhood, uh, as a, as a just-in-case option, provides a valuable second option should access be impeded on River Meadows Way. In summary, SUPs are cases that may be appropriate if the impacts from the proposed use can be mitigated. With this request, the applicant cannot mitigate the introduced impacts on the residents of River Meadows, and staff must recommend denial due to not being able to find all eight standards met. Should the board find that the proposal meets all eight standards, staff recommends that, uh, the board's approval be accompanied by the conditions within the approval resolution, as well as, as the three additional conditions just read. That concludes my presentation. I'll stand by for your questions, and the applicant does have a presentation of their own.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The three additions that you mentioned, uh, are those the only changes since the Planning Commission passed it?
No. Uh, the Planning Commission's verbatim, uh, condition that, that they wanted added to the approval resolution would have required that the applicant have a secondary point of access. Uh, the language was modified to require the applicant pursue the secondary access. The applicant has already, it looks like, obtained a letter from that property owner supportive of getting that access.
And you mentioned that, uh, it hadn't been determined whether, uh, traffic calming would be required. The Planning Commission was aware that it, that, that that had not been determined?
That, that was a recommended condition of, uh, within the, that was presented to them, that the, and it was, it was something that was proposed by the applicant originally, that they would, uh, conduct a traffic calming analysis, and if it warranted, uh, traffic calming measures, that the applicant would explore those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I do have one more thing to add. Uh, I noted that the, uh, applicant had received a letter of support from the property owner to the southwest. Staff also received an email, um, a, a letter of objection, uh, that was emailed to you. I have extra copies of those. If you'd like to, I can circulate them now. If you haven't already seen that, I'll, I could, your, your call, sir.
Sir, you can distribute them? Any other questions from the board that we could have right now?
Could I have the floor computer again, please? Uh, again, should you be interested, um, should you find the case meets the standards, these are the three conditions that, uh, kinda came up at the last minute.
Any questions on the board? Is that all you got, Patrick?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That can, I have nothing further at this time.
All right. The applicant can come up and present.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Payne, represent the applicant. Appreciate your time this evening. I appreciate Patrick's presentation. I do have a PowerPoint. I'm trying to get through this as quickly as I can, because I understand I do have a time limit. Patrick, you're controlling the slides, so, thank you. Uh, first slide, Patrick's covered most of this. The site is one parcel, includes about 10 acres. The property is currently zoned R2. A assisted living facility requires a special use permit under an R2. Uh, if we did a buy-ride project, it would generate 10 units, and VDOT has confirmed we will likely require a second access point. And I can show you that as we get through the slides. Uh, this would all be constructed at one time, probably within a couple of years. Uh, project will preserve a significant amount of open spaces. Does join the river. Uh, it will provide scenic buffering, uh, and a six-foot privacy fence to our west. Uh, we think this venue, uh, will be beneficial to our potential residents and to their family members. Next slide, please. Surrounding area, as Patrick has gone through, we're adjoining, uh, to the east by the Rappahannock River. Uh, to the west is River Heights, which is a mobile home park, includes 180 units. Uh, to our north is Tidewater Village, which is an older development, uh, residential subdivision. Uh, to our south is River Meadows. And all those properties are zoned R2. Here's a GDP, uh, which shows a connection, uh, to River Meadows Way, uh, to our south, Rappahannock River to our east. You'll see to our west the connection to Beverly Court, potential connection to Beverly Port, which is where proposing the EMS connection to be, which would be at River Heights, which is the mobile home, uh, development. Plan for this particular area, I think it's important to note that this is in a mixed-use area. So this is planned for the next 10 or 20 years for high-dense residential and commercial uses. Uh, what we're proposing, we believe, is a good buffer for that future development and a step in the right direction. It will not impact property values. It will buffer our, our neighbors to the south, uh, from the, the current mobile home facility, and also provide a, a very good use, uh, in this particular part of the county that is not there today, which is assisted living, which is needed throughout the county, quite honestly. Next slide, please. Uh, here's our architectural features. You see this will be a quality project. This is presented with our application. Next slide, please. Environmental and historic resources. Again, uh, Rappahannock River is to our east. This is not in the county, it's a historic overlay district, and this site was previously mined, so if there are any historic resources, I doubt they're there today. Transportation, as staff have noted, access will be mainly from River Meadows Way. Uh, roads within our project will be private, and it will be a gated community. Expected trips during peak hours are very low. They're 18 in the AM and 29 in the PM. And as you know, with assisted living facilities, they typically don't follow peak hour traffic activity. They usually are, are off-peak hour, uh, trips, including for employees. Crash data over the past five years has been minimal at the intersection of, uh, River Meadows Way and Route Two, just one accident in the past five years. Uh, this, this proposed project would generate less trips than what is contemplated on the comprehensive plan. Schools, no impacts, very important. Parks and Rec, no impacts. A project like this, even though it's a residential in nature, also generates lots of positive tax revenue and new jobs. If you think about the 48 beds that was generated by, uh, Spring Arbor, that generated an estimated net number of $150,000 just for 48 beds. So you're well over 300,000 in net tax revenue estimated for this use, and it's highly skilled workforce works in these locations. Public safety, fire and rescue station 11 is nearby. Consolidating individuals who need assisted living in our community into one location does reduce the cost and impact to EMS, because they're in one centralized location. That's very positive. Also on site, 24/7, you have professional healthcare personnel to reduce the number of calls and impacts, whether it's falls, wrong medication, they are there 24/7. We have also agreed to a condition, which we talked to with the Planning Commission, to include a physician, a medical-trained physician 24/7 on site, which will have a significant reduction, we believe, on EMS calls. We've also agreed, as you noted, as you know, to provide the second EMS access, just for EMS only. And also, uh, we'll have a sprinkler system and set up a communications plan with EMS. Staff report, respectfully disagree with staff. You know, we work well with staff, but respectfully disagree with her conclusion to suggest that EMS somehow with lights and sirens and EMS services is a nuisance to a community, is inconsistent with the whole purpose of EMS, and quite honestly, how assisted living facilities operate. I represent several assisted living facilities. The 239 calls a year, which is very speculative, is very inconsistent with what these developments generate. Typically, it's about five or six a month. Next slide, please. Staff report, staff talked about some of the differences between the Planning Commission report and what they presented to you. As you can see, uh, for element four, uh, they, the staff concluded that we would not have an effect on the health and safety of persons residing and working in the neighborhood. And, and for, for the purposes of the Board of Supervisors, they're taking a position that a safety risk is created because EMS services will come through River Meadows Way to our site. You can apply that rule to any neighborhood in Spotsylvania County that's in need of emergency services. That's every neighborhood. I just disagree. Next slide, please. Same here. Uh, proposal should not be a detriment to the public with the Planning Commission. Now it is with the Board of Supervisors under element five. Next slide, please. Under standard seven, taking the position that the proposed use introduces a potentially hazardous scenario. That EMS produces a potential hazardous scenario to get to our location. Just respectfully disagree. Especially after they took the position with the Planning Commission that it was not detrimental. Next slide, please. What other projects have been approved in Spotsylvania County that the assisted living facility is part of the overall makeup of a development? This is Lafayette Crossing. You may be familiar off of Lafayette Boulevard, the sheets that's out front. The townhouses around back. All the way in the back was approved assisted living facility, 100 beds. Look at how EMS would have to transverse to get to the site, right through the middle of the development. Now, that was not developed. It was eventually donated to the Park Service, but that was analyzed for traffic impacts. And it was concluded that this potential, this, this assisted living facility would work. Next slide, please. This is at Cosners East, Cardinal Village, right next to a very dense multifamily development. Right next to it, across the street's the hospital. Next slide, slide, please. Spring Arbor. Today, there's only one way into Spring Arbor, and that's off of River Road, and they're just surrounded by single-family villas. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is what the potential connection would be if we did a buy right development. It'll be two, VDOT will require us to have two access points, and you'll see what would happen, is you would create basically a connection between the developments to the east, I'm sorry, to the north, and to the west with the development to the south. I don't think this is what we all want. Next slide, please. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on the board? I was gonna comment, I, I would say that the increase in the, you're gonna have, you know, the subdivision there first, you know, and with assisted living facility, that, that living community is not gonna, you know, cause for the amount of calls that that assisted living will. There's certainly, depending on the type of call, when you have a 40, 50,000 pound engine running through there legally with 10 miles an hour over speed limit, and you've got a bunch of kids, school buses, I'm sure cars parked on the sides of the streets, I would say that there is increased hazard in, in running up and down those roads to assisted living facility all the way in the back. There's no question. You know, some of these other, I, I wasn't part of the approval of any of these others. You know, and I think I voted no for every single development so far except for one. So, I wasn't part of these, all these were prior to me coming on the board that were approved with assisted living facilities in the very back, which is, that's crazy. Spring Arbor was there, the, I will, I guess, argue for that one. That was there before the, the living, the houses, townhomes, whatever they're called. And same with, I think Keswick has one already planned to come in there, which would be basically before any of the homes are in there. So that's gonna be, you know, when you buy in there, you already know what's there and what you're gonna be getting up and down the road. I can tell you when I was at six, running up and down the, we went to Spring Arbor fairly regularly. We went to Golden, I think it was called Golden Living, I have a different name for it, but we were there on a regular basis. So I don't know, I'd actually say their findings are pretty, can be pretty close, depending on the quality of the facility. You know, even with the doctor there, though, you know, you, you can't, when you're dealing with an, an older population, you can't estimate when somebody's gonna go into cardiac arrest, stroke, anything like that, and that's gonna, not only are you gonna get the ambulance, but you're gonna get a fire truck too, so, because of more personnel and trained personnel that's needed for those type of calls. And I think it's crazy that we're approving, I shouldn't say that, it's bad words, but I think we have to use some better judgment when we're putting these type of facilities and parks and stuff at the very end of, you know, our subdivisions. I mean, you're gonna bring added traffic, and nobody, I don't know, I won't say nobody, that's bad worded too, but a lot of folks don't necessarily follow a 25 mile per hour speed limit. So I'll just leave it like that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully disagree.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, the, the trend today, and the trend all over the country, quite honestly, is you don't put these facilities necessarily next to hospitals. You don't put them in commercial centers. One, it's very expensive to do that, and the cost for these facilities for the residents and for the patients is very expensive. So you're seeing a lot more of this compatible development scheme whereby they are in mixed use residential uses, or a residential and a commercial use. So you're seeing that trend today. It's in Stafford, if you think about where Falls Run is, it's, it's very much in a very, in a very residential area. Spring Arbor was planned mixed with the, with the villas and with the, the assisted living facility. As you saw the plan with, with Lafayette Crossing, very, very similar concept. Locating individuals in this, who need assistance living, assistant living assistance, I'm sorry, in a, one central location actually is a very good thing, because you're actually able to consolidate those needs versus having it spread out through the community, which can be very expensive and very challenging for EMS services. So there's, there maybe is some trade-off that needs to be looked at and better evaluated. I don't disagree with you there, but the, the underlying concept makes a lot of sense. And I think having trained physician on-site will significantly reduce EMS calls. And look, the reality is, we've got an aging community in place. We don't want folks to move out of our community, our family members to be somewhere else. This particular part of the county has no such facility, not even close, that go to the city of Fredericksburg. So, I understand your, your, your position. At the same time, I think it can be mitigated, it can be done so in a manner that would reduce any impacts, and it's an asset, quite honestly, it's an asset to the community.
Well, I don't doubt it being an asset to the community, but, you know, put it at the front of this development would be a whole lot smarter than putting it at the very end. That's just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, and let's not forget, this whole entire area is, is gonna change. It's planned to be changed anyways. It's supposed to be more intense. The development's gonna happen next to folks at River Meadows, and next to folks at River Heights, the folks at Tidewater. It's gonna happen. It's gonna change and be redeveloped.
It is.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marshall?
One quick question, the secondary access that's dropped, Patrick had it in his presentation with the, the yellow access point, the yellow road, and then you had the green road that came in, is that proposed if needed, or is that part of the, for the proposal? Will that be put in, or will it not?
It will be put in. We, the planning commission asked us to look at it. Howard Smith said that we need to find a, a separate access point. The chief, fire chief was here, said that was one of the things he was concerned about, and that's something that we, we were able to negotiate with the adjoining property owner to make it out.
Okay, so there will be two entrances?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, there will be, there will be, and only an emergency service access.
Okay, so, it'll be gated?
Right. Be gated, and EMS will have a key to it.
Okay.
Any other questions for the board? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing for SUP 180007, B Farms Development LLC, Franklin Crossing ALF. And this is the Lee Hill voting, does anybody sign up?
Andrew Warrot, with, followed by Terrence Sanders.
Hello, members of the board. Andrew Wampat, one of the residents of River Meadows. So I think that in general, totally agree with you, sir. This is, the idea to put this assisted living facility in there is not a good plan from our perspective. We didn't, when the, when the community was established, this wasn't even on our roadmap. Obviously, had it been on our roadmap, I'm not, I'm pretty convinced a lot of us may not have chose to move into this facility, or to the, to the, to the neighborhood. For sure, it's not, we chose it because the, the community was small, we felt we could know our neighbors, the school districts and so forth. And I, I, I have children, so I'm, I'm very sensitive to the prospect of emergency vehicles coming down through that way. And I, some of me, I have the concern of what it will do to our property value, right, when all is said and done. I'd be surprised if my, my neighbors don't have that same concern. And I ask that you, as, as you stated earlier, there's, there's a, there's a concern across the community, and I think that from a, this probably is needed in the community, but it was never on any roadmap we've ever seen for this, for this community. I guess I really say, I didn't realize that I was signing up to actually speak.
Terrence Sanders, followed by Twana Sanders.
Oh, okay.
If you're gonna speak, come on up to the mic. That'd put you in the hot seat, but...
I'd just like to thank you all for allowing us.
I won't need your, your name and just...
Hi, my name is Terrence Sanders. I am a member, member, I am a resident of River Meadows, and I appreciate all of you giving me the opportunity to come before you, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. The opportunity to create an area where there shouldn't be one due to the traffic dangers that it may create, it was not something that we as a resident was, is looking forward to. And so that's our biggest concern, high, high-traffic-volume areas of emergency vehicles, kids being awakened and not being able to sleep or study, so on and so forth. So there's a lot of things that are concerned. So I know I stood up here and said I wasn't gonna talk, but obviously, I did have something that I wanted to add to this conversation. So again, my wife is not coming up, I'm gonna sit down, and I'd like to thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Timothy Warring, followed by Curtis Dunn.
Good evening, and thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name's Tim Wilking. I'm a resident of River, on Rivers Meadow Way, and I'm here to speak in opposition to this request. Like everyone said, my, my objection's primarily safety-based. I'm the father of three young children, all boys ranging in ages from 10 to 1. This proposal will, will drastically increase traffic on River Meadows Way, including staff, emergency vehicles, and guests. This traffic will increase the hazards to children playing in the neighborhood. Put bluntly, I fear any of these vehicles from staff EMS vehicles traveling at a high rave speed to do their duty, striking any one of my three children as they bike in their own residential neighborhood. Tied to this point is River Meadows Way is a residential street. This proposal would alter this and would in effect make this road, which is residential, into a county road. Increased emergency vehicle traffic will add an additional disturbance to residents, as mentioned, as kids try to sleep, study, sit around their front porch. Additionally, the added traffic will make what is already a difficult turn onto Route 2 even more so, particularly once again heading left or west. While only one of you directly represent me, I would ask how you would react if this was being proposed in Kingswood, Salem Fields, Bridgewater, Brittany Commons, or any of the other residential areas, neighborhoods within this county. I can think of no neighborhood where the sole or primary point of access to any business is through a neighborhood. Once again, primary point of access, which this secondary entrance will not change. This property is currently zoned R2, and I ask the Board of Supervisors to keep it that way and reject the special use permit request again. Thank you for your time and providing me the opportunity to speak.
Curtis Dunn, followed by Renee Dunn.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Curtis Dunn, I'm resident Lee Hill District, live in River Meadows, on River Meadows Way. Obviously, I'm very concerned about any development at the back of our neighborhood that has traffic going right past my door. I've lived in the Fredericksburg area for almost 50 years, but always in the city or in Stafford. I chose to move to Spotsylvania because of the very nature of River Meadows as a residential neighborhood. So let me first say, this process is transparent and clear to y'all because you're immersed in it, but it's rather unclear to those of us that have to only encounter it once a while. And that's why we asked in the email that you got in front of you, that there, if you're, you're thinking about continuing this, that there would be a continuance or return to the planning commission. But because I recognize the lack of awareness in the neighborhood, I wrote up a summary for people and proceeded to knock on every single door in the neighborhood. I didn't talk to everyone, but did actually talk to about two-thirds of the households. Most were vaguely aware of the basic facts, most definitely didn't understand specifics. I did not talk to anyone who expressed support for development at the back of our neighborhood of anything other than the simple, single-family homes that everyone believed were in alignment with the characteristics of the neighborhood and what the land was zoned for when Mr. Garrison bought it. Needless to say, a commercial assisted living facility was not supported due to the additional problems created by staff, family, commercial deliveries, 240 emergency responses per year, which is really 480 trips down in front of my house. And despite assertions that sirens and lights are not a nuisance, the entire point of their use is to get attention. So when we can expect them hundreds of times a year, they go beyond a seldom encountered necessity to what could truly be called a nuisance. You're basically fundamentally changing the nature of our neighborhood. The developer would have you believe that their proposal of a commercial assisted living facility within a residential neighborhood has precedent in the county. They made that assertion at the planning commission, they made it tonight. There's a major fallacy to this argument, though, which I believe you actually even pointed out, Mr. Chairman. Every example they brought up was approved, was designed that way from the beginning. Any resident who chose to live in that neighborhood once, but once built, was aware of the assisted living facility, and that points out that successful mixed-use areas should be designed, not cobbled together. Here, the most common sentiment that I encountered was that families moved here because it was not heavily traveled and they expected it to remain a purely residential neighborhood. And per Spotsylvania County Code, special use permits require that uses that are generally compatible with the other land uses permitted in zoning district. This does not meet that criteria. There have been statements about traffic studies and impacts to the county. Every time that discussion comes up, it's clear that the impact being analyzed is the impact to the county itself in Route 2. Now, that's important data, but it's the macro view. The micro view is what it means to us, the residents of River Meadows. An additional couple hundred vehicles means very little to Route 2, but it means a great deal to us, especially entering and especially exiting the neighborhood. And talking about traffic calming and secondary entrance, the developer and the planning commission are in effect saying, let's create problems and then we'll see if we can fix them. So your role as supervisors is to balance the needs and benefits of the county with the impacts to the people, and I hope you'll take concerns raised here by the residents very seriously, because we're the ones most affected by it. Don't do, you know, don't let something happen just because it can. We should not be the ones to pay the price for Mr. Garrison's greed when he already has the ability to make a good profit on an R2 zone property. Please don't be blinded by tax revenue. So, I'm open to questions.
Renee Dunn, followed by Dustin Gertz.
Hi, my name's Renee Dunn. I'm in the Lee Hill District and live on River Meadows Way. I want to address some issues related to traffic that haven't already been brought up. So, right now, it can take upwards of five minutes to make a left-hand turn out of our neighborhood. We saw it tonight when we were leaving to come here. So, the, our, and our neighborhood sits between the lights on Route 2 and Mansfield Street, which is by the Wawa, and then Route 2 and Benchmark, which is by the Weiss. And with the traffic coming from both directions, just when traffic is clearing up from one direction, it's starting from the other direction. So you have to wait a really long time to have a gap to be able to make a left-hand turn out of our neighborhood. It can be horrible on Sundays when people are using Route 2 as an alternate to 95. And now you're talking about having more traffic coming into the neighborhood. You've got staff, commercial, delivery, EMS, everything like that. The people who are gonna be making the left turn into the neighborhood have right-of-way over the people who are trying to make the left turn out. That's gonna add more time to get people out of the neighborhood. So when you have shift changes, and now you've got 20, 30 people trying to leave the neighborhood at the same time, it's gonna back up on the street, and people aren't even gonna be able to get into their own driveways. Speaking of the left-hand turn into the neighborhood, it was designed for residential traffic. It's a short turn lane. If you've got, you know, a shift coming on, and you've got a whole bunch of people trying to turn into the neighborhood, that traffic is gonna back up, it's not, that little turn lane is not gonna be able to hold it, that traffic is gonna back up into the travel part of Route 2 and block up Route 2. Additionally, our neighborhood doesn't get plowed when it snows. So now you're talking about sending staff, EMS, commercial delivery, visitors, whatever, down a snowy, icy, unplowed residential street. This business that's being proposed can't close when it snows. It's a medical facility, it's gotta be open 24/7, 365. Those people have to get to work. Now you're telling them they gotta go down a snowy, icy, unplowed street. If, whatever, if for some reason our neighborhood gets put on the, the plowed list, great, now there is an actual incurred cost that the county has to pay, where you're not really paying it right now. So, this winter is being forecasted to be higher than usual snow rates. So, think about when you're sending plows out this winter, what's the additional cost gonna be if you were gonna have to send a plow through River Meadows every time to clear those streets so that the EMS and the staff and everybody can get through? Thank you for listening. I urge you to vote against the special use permit. Thank you.
Dustin Gertz, followed by Jamal Kaddick.
Good evening, I'm Dustin Gertz. Thank you for your time. I'm not for the assisted living. My wife is a physician. She couldn't be here tonight, and she's against it. My wife is a specialist in traumatic brain injury, and when you have a facility like this, what you can end up with is pretty much out of your control. It's whatever they allow to have in. It's one thing for them to say that they'll have something on staff all the time, it's another thing to actually see it. So she expressed her concerns, and I'm just passing them along to you. Now, as far as all the traffic is concerned, I know they mentioned that there was only one accident in five years. Well, I've been there in 13 years, and I had a traffic accident in front of my house where the van caught on fire. And unfortunately, that was in Mr. Cadet's driveway, or in his front yard. That's where the driver of the car that hit his van ended up, in his front yard. Now, that's just one of those things that can happen. But that's just the low traffic that we have now, but it did happen. So to say that for sure, statistically, it's not going to, you can't say that. You just can't tell for sure. And we just don't wanna incur more traffic during the daytime hours for our family and And we just don't want to incur more traffic during the daytime hours for our family and for our children. I picked this neighborhood because of how quiet it is. And as a matter of fact, I just finished refinancing because I got three years until I retire for good. And I was looking forward to hanging around for a while, possibly. Now, if this facility goes in, I'm telling you, when I retire, I'm gone. I'm not staying here. I like it here. I've been here thirteen years. Marine Corps has moved me around several times. Seen a lot of things, been a lot of places. And as far as, you know, law enforcement is concerned, I was a reserve sheriff for eight years in San Bernardino County. So I know what it's like. I know what it's like to have the lights. I know what it's like to go to facilities to assist with the people that are running these facilities with people that are out of control. Not everybody's cooperative in these facilities. And I just don't want it now in my neighborhood. If I thought it was going to be there, I probably wouldn't have picked the neighborhood to begin with. You know, I've always been told there's going to be ten homes. I'm good with that. I'm supportive of them building something that is commensurate to what we thought we were going to get and thought we were going to live with. So, you know, I encourage you to vote against it and I thank you for your time.
Jamal Kadik followed by Christian and Wendy Daniels.
Good evening, board, and thank you for the time. My name is Jamal Kadik. I've been a resident of River Meadows Way for seventeen years. I'm one of the original residents. As Dustin Gertz clearly pointed out, in front of my home some years ago, my vehicle burst into flames because of an accident that I had no control over. And the road did the same way now as they were then. I'm hearing talk of a primary entrance down River Meadows Way, which is right in front of my home. What has not been brought up is that the fact that that road tapers as you go further down. So when you start getting large vehicles in there, it's going to be tight and people park on the street and you're going to run into things. I guess the best way I can put it is, this, if anything, is the worst place ever to possibly conceive of an assisted living community. You have one way in, one way out, and you're planning on putting a secondary emergency entrance in in case the primary is backed up. Well, we live on the primary. That's a problem not just for the people in the back, but for everybody else who lives on the street. I mean, tax revenue, while important, I think good planning needs to take place and look at where you're putting these places. To have a landlocked assisted living community in the back of a subdivision next to a river, while picturesque, is less, lack of better word, just plain stupid and boneheaded and could be conceived as a money grab because you want to line the coffers of the county because of bad planning. And not to mention, the road that we live off of, two and seventeen, it's landlocked. You have the sports community down the road at New Post and on a Sunday afternoon, it can take you twenty-five, thirty minutes to traverse that road. But nothing's being talked about widening that. We won't even talk about sticking more places in this neighborhood and the area. They've built another hundred and eighty homes down the street, townhomes. They're building another hundred and sixty homes in New Post. And now you want to add another assisted living community in the middle of all that? But nothing against being done to address the issues that are already in place, only add more on top of it. And I don't really see the benefit. I mean, if they want to do something for the community and put a assisted living community there, there is room in New Post. There's a great intersection there, high traffic capability. You could put an off-ramp and it's out of the way. Instead of forcing on people that have already invested. I've invested most of my life in this neighborhood now. And you're asking to fundamentally change it. I grew up in New York City and I can definitely tell you that the burden of noise pollution and traffic and signals and the sirens is maddening. We have veterans that have PTSD that live in our neighborhood and this would also affect them. But I don't hear any of that being addressed. Just please think when you vote on this, and I ask you, send it back to the planning commission because this should be dead on arrival. This should not be up for a vote. This should go back and never started again. Thank you for your time.
Christian and Wendy Daniels followed by Robert Craig.
Wendy, my name is Wendy Daniels. I live in the River Meadows community. I think there have been a lot of really good points raised by my neighbors about opposition to the assisted living facility. My husband and I too are in opposition to the assisted living facility. I'm not sure that you need to hear again all the concerns about the traffic and the safety, but those are genuine concerns of the entire, of the majority of the neighborhood. It is a heavy child neighborhood, lots and lots of kids. So the fact that we are talking about having more vehicles coming in, not just the emergency vehicles, but just all the vehicles, is very, very concerning to all of us. So again, we would just hope that you would vote in favor of the neighborhood and in opposition to the assisted living facility.
Robert Craig followed by Robert Finley.
Good evening. I'm Robert Craig and part of the community as well. I think one of the ways to bring us together as a community, especially in River Meadows, is to drive a fire truck down it. We have so many kids and so many families that we're all standing on our front porch trying to figure out who needs help and what we can do about it. And that's kind of who we are. We worry a lot about the EMS, but I have a mother-in-law at Hartfields and visit there routinely. I can tell you that we're forgetting the visitor traffic. We haven't even talked about that. That's from eight until, probably eight in the morning until eight at night. And anytime that I go to Hartfields, which is about half the size of this proposal, there's about fifteen to twenty cars, no exaggeration of just visitors in the parking lot at any time of day. The other thing that we're not taking into account is that it is not unusual for me. I visit at all kinds of different times. To have medical facility trucks sitting in the front, to have life care vehicles taking residents to and from their appointments in town, and you've got all this traffic that's going on. I'm betting that if you talk to a Spotsylvania school bus driver or any one of these guys that are driving the EMS vehicles that are trying to get down River Meadows Way is an interesting trip in a fire truck. There's cars on both sides. There's kids. There's all, we have raised five kids in this neighborhood because it's a kid-friendly neighborhood. We play sports in the streets. We throw footballs across from sidewalk to sidewalk. We play lacrosse. If the ball goes in, it goes out into the street, we chase it down. And we watch each other's kids. It's what we do. We didn't have in mind having a thoroughfare go to a residence at the very end of this. So, I would encourage you to reject this proposal and to rule in favor of the neighbors. Thank you very much for your time.
Robert Finley followed by Brian Butler.
Good evening. I wanted to, to save you from hearing the same arguments over and over again, I wanted to share a little bit of different perspective on this subdivision. I'm retired Air Force. I, after retiring, I went overseas to an undisclosed location in the Middle East for four years. I've been, I worked over there for four years. We bought this home after my return from that four-year deployment. There were several reasons that went into that decision to buy this particular home. We purchased it in December of two thousand and sixteen. The reason we bought it was because it was a closed family welcoming neighborhood. I have an eight-year-old son and I also have a six-year-old daughter. They are out in the street every night riding their bicycles, playing soccer, throwing baseballs across the street. And this is not an isolated one person. This happens throughout this neighborhood. And this is exactly what you're going to ruin if you vote for this, okay? Somebody mentioned veterans. There's a lot of veterans. I am a veteran. Fortunately, I do not suffer from PTSD, but I do know people who have PTSD. I have a coworker who has a service dog because of his PTSD. Loud sirens at all times of night, especially in the middle of the night, that is a nuisance, regardless of what Mr. Payne might want to try to sell you, okay? I strongly urge you to vote against this. I do not disagree in assisted living. My mom was a registered nurse who worked in a nursing home for several years. It is a very valuable asset to a community. But it needs, like he was showing you the plans for some of the other divisions, those communities were planned with that assisted living facility in mind. This subdivision, when it was built, had no intention of putting a assisted living facility in there. There is plenty of places to put an assisted living facility in this neighborhood without putting it in the subdivision itself. So again, I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Brian Butler followed by Shane Lack.
Good evening, pardon me. I'm Brian Butler. Thank you for your time. First, I want to start off by thanking one of the planning commission members and that was Mr. Medina, I believe, who, if you note, voted against this proposal. He was the one planning commission member that actually traversed the neighborhood and took a look to see what the ground truth actually was. Took his time to come out and take a look at it and as you could see, based off of what he saw in the streets, he voted no. No other project in the county is a direct comparison and staff has identified the concerns. That's why they recommended against this proposal. By council's admission, this is essentially concentrating ambulance and fire truck service into one area at the back of a neighborhood. It does not seem like a prudent thing to do. This neighborhood was designed with the streets built for residential traffic, not commercial traffic. We can say an onsite physician will eliminate the need for higher ambulance use and that's true, but it doesn't stop the service vehicles. It doesn't stop the visitors. It doesn't stop everybody else. As, as you're well aware, every time the lights and sirens goes on, it's an increased hazard. Not just for the residents, not just for the kids playing, but it's also the drivers and the people operating those. As you well know, hazard goes up every time that happens. It becomes more dangerous for everybody. And that's why we train them specially. There were some talk about, hey, this is a mixed use or this will be a mixed use in the future. For the vast bulk of us, we're way underwater. So there's no way that we're going to be leaving anytime soon. So maybe to the north of us, there will be some mixed use, but unless you went through eminent domain, nobody's, there's not a price that you're going to be, that somebody's going to be willing to pay to redevelop our neighborhood. Once again, this was previously approved as a neighborhood. And now we're looking to change that, which is fundamentally different than what all of us have purchased. I would argue that maximum profitability for the landowner should not trump our, our quality of life. As you noted, we have kids running around and kids don't always listen. So, I would urge you to vote against this proposal and look at the whole.
Sir, I'm sorry, but your time has expired.
Shane Lack followed by Leslie Petry.
A lot of this has already been covered. You've already heard what I'm going to say for the most part, but I'm going to read it in case it adds anything to it. My name is Shane Lack and I live on River Meadows Way in the neighborhood in question. I was unable to attend the meeting in May and voiced my objections to this development because I was in Arizona. Before starting, I'd like to begin by noting that we only received notice of this meeting on October fourth. That is one day before the beginning of a three-day weekend, meaning that basically we had two working days to respond to the notice. This is inadequate time to properly address a development which will have such an adverse impact on our neighborhood. This development will be placing a business at the end of a residential neighborhood with only one entrance to the neighborhood. There will be employees racing to work through a neighborhood with children, riding bicycles and playing in traffic. In addition, increased traffic in the neighborhood would include not only medical staff, but maintenance people, food service, cleaning people. Because it is a medical facility, there would be multiple shifts, meaning traffic would significantly increase throughout the day, not just at one time. In addition to this, there would be numerous visitors, trucks delivering supplies on the roads that were not designed for heavy trucks. There would also be ambulances at all times of the day. I live on a curve in River Meadows. Already, I've had one driver lose control on that curve, nearly strike the house where my wife was sleeping. And it did several thousands of dollars of damage to my lawn and other stuff. There is absolutely no reason whatsoever for placing a medical facility or any other business at the back of a residential neighborhood with only one entrance. And even if you build a second entrance, that neighborhood is even more dense and it can only be used every once in a while. Medical facilities should be built in areas that have direct access to major roads that are designed for businesses. To do otherwise puts patients and others at risk. There are plenty of places in the county or city that are much better suited to this facility. If this facility is needed, it will be built somewhere else. So voting against this will not deny people access to healthcare. This brings me to another point. So why is this being considered at all? Why do I and my neighbors have to come down to object to this? This area was originally zoned for ten homes. We bought our ten homes with the understanding, or we bought our homes with the understanding that ten homes were going to be built on that property and there would be only one entrance to the neighborhood. The developer bought the property with the same understanding. Now he wants to change it in order to make more money. If he builds this assisted living facility at the end of our neighborhood, our housing values will be negatively impacted, as will the quality of our life. And the attorney says it won't be impacted, but he presents no proof for that.
Sir, I'm sorry, but your time has expired.
Leslie, Leslie Petry followed by Martin Petry. Martin Petry followed by Cynthia Lewis.
Of, of guidelines and rules that, that relate to the planning of the county. Zoning is part of that. Fundamental purpose of zoning is for the purpose of planning a community or a city. We elect boards like you to represent our interests and to protect us and to enforce zoning and to hold to your, 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 your planning concepts. And I, I'm no, I'm not stupid. I understand things change and evolve, but this is not evolution. This property was zoned residential. A hundred and thirty families bought homes with that understanding. A developer bought the other property with the same understanding, and now he's asking to jerk the rug out from under everybody for whatever purposes he has in mind. I don't know. But as was said a few minutes ago, our interest of already being there, already being established, and being the people that you represent should absolutely trump everything else unless there is just an overriding reason for it not to. And nothing has been said, regardless of the glossy slides that get put up by a hired gun. You can say anything you want, but it doesn't make it true. And a lot of what the gentleman said, it's just not proven fact. Your own staff recommended that the planning commission reject this. They still recommend that it be rejected, and I, I wouldn't urge you to send it back to the planning commission. I would urge you to just put it to bed and kill it right here tonight, please. Especially you, Mr. Skinner.
Cynthia Lewis, Cynthia Lewis followed by Butch Dini. Butch Dini.
Good evening. My name's, my, my given name is Harry Drainey. I live at 11613 Herrinview Drive in River Meadows neighborhood. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Skinner, rest of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking in opposition of the assisted living facility. We built our home in River Meadows fourteen years ago, and there was a reason we built there. It was for a type of lifestyle that we wanted to live and that we've worked hard to maintain. The type of traffic, the, the, the issues that have been brought up tonight will alter that way of life. It will have a significant change on how we conduct our lives in our neighborhood. Particularly where I live, I live in the same curve as Mr. Lack, just across the street on the other side. My address is Herrinview Drive, but the majority of my home is on River Meadows Way. I'm at the corner of River Meadows Way and Herrinview Drive. We built our house here because of what we thought the neighborhood was going to be, what it has been and what it has continued to be, and that's why we've stayed. So based on where I live in the neighborhood and based on why we built where we did, the approval of this will have a significant change, especially with, it doesn't meet the eight It will end up leading likely to us moving. That'll be twenty-one years we've been in the Lee Hill District, fourteen at this particular residence, and we will leave. Thank you.
Teresa Kim. You don't want to speak? Okay. That's all I have. She's the last one.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up to speak that would like to speak at this time in reference to this special use? We'll close the public hearing. Does the applicant want to come and address any of this?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board supervisors. Again, my name is Charlie Payne, represent the applicant. Appreciate your time this evening. I appreciate the comments from the community. Despite the fact of being accused of being a hired gun, I do care very much for this community, do care very much about their concerns, and which is why we changed our plan. Our initial plan was to develop it pursuant to what the comprehensive plan projects it to be, which is high-dense residential, which would generate a lot more traffic, very likely require us to connect to River Heights, which would create much more of an impact. Went back to the drawing board, took a look at what the site appeared to be for this highest and best use under R2, its current zoning, and what is needed in that area of the assisted living facility. We talked to some folks who we thought would be a user for that facility, investor, the venue, the compatibility with the neighborhood, the new investment in the neighborhood. Let's not forget, this is a, other than River Meadows, which isn't necessarily a new neighborhood, but if you look at River Heights and you look at Tidewater Village, those are older neighborhoods, which is why future planning is for redevelopment. So this was not done haphazard, this wasn't done for greed, this was done as to what's the highest and best use for that area. And then we went even further, recognizing the fact that there are going to be some concerns about traffic and only one point of access through River Meadows. So for emergency services having a secondary access, and in fact, if it was the primary access for emergency service, we have no say on that, we're fine with that as well, or for our employees. Or for that matter, that our employees' shifts would not be during peak hours, further reducing potential impact. I can't help but the alleged issues today, cars parked on the side of the streets, whatever it may be. All I know is the level of services at that intersection on Tidewater Trail in River Meadow Way are A and B, A during, A during AM peak hours and B during PM. That's pretty darn good. I respectfully disagree that somehow we're going to have an adverse impact in that regard. And these facilities are important. They're important to our community. Yes, they do generate positive tax revenue. Yes, they do bring in new jobs, highly skilled jobs, all of those things very positive for our community, and more importantly, they serve a need that our community needs, to allow our family members to age in place and not be disconnected, not have to go somewhere else. It's, it's happening all through this region. There's a dire need for assisted living in nursing homes in this entire region because we're aging in place, one of the fastest growing aging populations in the whole Commonwealth per capita. So we did hear you. We adjusted our plan, and this is not done with disregard. I also, again, I heard several times tonight, our emergency services and first responders are not a public hazard. They are serving an important public interest that every community is benefited by, and I guess in this analysis, impacted by. But again, we are willing to continue to work through solutions. I think we have proposed significant solutions that would reduce the calls. I disagree with a number of calls in the estimate, I'm sorry. It's just not consistent with what our users are telling us. Having a full-time physician on that site is a big deal. I, I can't think of another user operator in this area that has that or willing to do that. And having an emergency communication plan with EMS to reduce those calls, having our employees come in, they come in anyways during non-peak hours. I mean, that's what assisted living, assisted living facilities highly operate, they'll come in during peak hours. So we're willing to continue to work with the community, we're willing to find solutions, but this is not a project being proposed in a reckless manner. It's, it's a project that's being proposed in a reasonable manner, based on, quite honestly, with the future planning for the areas, and in fact, this is going to be less of an impact. We open up a connection to River Heights, you're going to have a cut-through going south that we can't control. So with that, again, I'm, we're open to ongoing solutions. We think we've got some strong ones proposed, and we're willing to work with you and the community through that process. Thank you very much for your time.
Any comments or questions for the board? Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of good points. Charlie, nothing for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A lot of good points. What I would like to do, please, I'd like to table this, and I'd like to personally meet as a group with you. I don't know how we, if somebody could be a point of contact instead of meeting up. I, I think we would like to talk a little bit more, what we can do. So my recommendation, and I hope somebody, gentleman back there, I've talked to two gentlemen here. I don't, are they here tonight that called me on the phone? Mr. Was it White? Yes, Raymond was there. But I'd like to sit down with y'all. I know what your concerns are, and I'd like to, to see what we can do because in, in my opinion, there is a compromise here, okay? But I would like to sit down before we even vote this. So is there anybody out there that would actually, as a point of contact? I'd be happy to sit down as a group wherever you want, wherever you can fix it up at, and sit down and talk to y'all, because I think there is a solution out there, I really do, for everybody. So my motion is to table this until the next meeting, please, the second meeting.
Any discussion? Motion by Mr. Skinner to table till our next.
Mr. Skinner, so I guess, is that enough time? Because that's what, two weeks?
Well, let me ask those people out there, can we, can you gather a meeting within the next, let's, the next week, okay? It, it's up to you. Go ahead, sir. Well, sir, I'm not ready to give up. I want to protect you guys, and I want to protect the developer too, see what we can do. Okay? Well, you don't know that for sure, sir.
Let's, let's move to the motion, because you.
Okay. That's, that's fine. I will tell you. No, sir, I can't do that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Let's move to the motion.
Mr. Chair, it's your.
Motion by Mr. Skinner to table.
And if, if, if for some reason it's not answered by the next meeting, then we will, we can extend it. We can sit table at that time too, till we get the right answer.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes, sir.
Calling for the motion. Sharon, yes. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Chair.
Thank you. After this meeting's over, please, if I could get two points of contact, something, we'll, we'll schedule something to get together.
Want to take five? Well, say so. Call adjournment? You want to adjourn for five minutes? No? Mr. Taylor, I think we have Comcast.
Yes, we do. Jane is here for the Comcast report on the Lake Anna expansion.
Good evening. I have Ms. Schuler here with me tonight from Comcast. There have been some concerns addressed by several board members about the extension of Comcast throughout the Lake Anna area. Just as a refresher, in June of 2013, we renewed the franchise agreement with Comcast. Part of that franchise agreement was that they built out into the Lake Anna area through identified streets that, I'll let Marie go through the details of that, but their project has been delayed. They have been working to wrap it up this year, and so I'm going to let Marie address what the progress is and then be able to address any questions, and then I'll be happy to follow up with any additional information if you need it. Thank you, Marie.
Thanks, Jane. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm Marie Schuler. I am Director of Government and Community Affairs for Comcast, and I know some of you from prior, prior board meetings. So Jane asked me to come today to give you an update on the status of the Lake Anna project, and as she mentioned, it was something that Comcast did negotiate with staff, Spotsylvania County staff during our cable television franchise negotiation back in 2013. What we did was, at the time, there was a desire to do some further build-out in the county, and we sent our crews out to look at the Lake Anna area and survey the area. And they came back with a, a potential plan to build out the northern side of, of Lake Anna. The scope of work actually consisted of 1,392 addresses, and I say addresses because you'll understand as I get further into this. But we incorporated that, those addresses into Exhibit A of the franchise agreement, and that's what we've been working, working towards all, all this time. When we actually did some construction work and did our planning, we discovered that there were some addresses that were not valid addresses. There was actually seventy-four of those, 1,392, that we could not physically locate, nor could we find them in the GAIS mapping, and we've, we'll ask the county staff to actually vet this. Typically, that happens because as the crews are going through the communities, they might see a structure and believe it might, might be a home, and they're kind of guessing at what the address is. So they're, they're putting down an address, and we're trying to validate it at a later point in time. But what that did was, it, oh, I'm sorry, there were also, in that, in that seventy-four, we identified eighteen homes, I'm sorry, eighteen addresses that were specifically for 4634 Courthouse Road, and they were like A, B, C, D addresses, and that turned out to be the Marina, and there's not that many units down there. We did cover and serve the whole Marina, so there is commercial service available down there. So that left a remaining address list of 1,318 addresses, and we built out infrastructure to 1,197. And that means that we pass those, those addresses, and those residents can get service. Some of them can get it just by a standard drop, some will require an additional contribution because they sit so far off the road. But every single one of those addresses can get service currently, and, and with the caveat of about a half dozen addresses that we identified in cleanup that we missed, and they're building those right now. That leaves the remaining 121 addresses, we are, which we are still working, and we're working those because to our immense surprise, the, that, that section of Lake Anna has a lot of private roads. So these 121 addresses all reside on private, private roads, which require us to get easements. We are not a utility, we are a corporation, and it does require, we don't have the same rights as what a utility does, so we do have to get private easements to go down some of these roads. We know that we're not going to get all of these roads. There are some individual one, one-two homes per road that we've been unable to make contact with. Certainly, private road is one of those, which you'll be very familiar with. There's several others that they've refused to allow us to come down the road, but we're trying to whittle through and actually get as many of those as we possibly can. So to go back to what I previously had said, we, under the franchise, we built out 1,197 So to go back to what I previously had said, we, under the franchise, we built out 1,197 of those 1392 homes. We also built an additional 518 homes that went beyond the scope of what the franchise required, and those were homes that we found that had been constructed since we actually put the lists, the original list together, as well as some original scope of work that we did based on some of the, some of the ways we could accommodate some of the additional streets around, around the, the scope of work. So as of, as of right now, we have built out to 1,715 homes, and are hoping to get another, another few from that 121 that are on private roads, and that's what we're working right now. All those residences will have access to the full range of Comcast service, so whether they want video, internet, the broadband service, voice service, our security services, or any other service that comes down the road, it has been future-proofed to be able to provide them with all those services. And that's kind of an update on where we stand right now. So I can take any questions anyone has.
Any questions, comments from the board? I'm going to try to be as professional, as nice as I can, a little frustrated. You were supposed to be finished with the build out in, end of June?
June 30th.
June 30th. What has, what has kept y'all from doing this, being complete?
We've actually had quite a few delays on this project, and I think if we had, if we had taken a look at it initially, we would have either modified the scope of work, or we certainly would have looked at the time, timeframe to, to deal with it. I mean, we had prescriptive easements issues, we had pole attachment issues, we had issues with people refusing to allow us access. Certainly this year, we've had a lot of issues with the weather, with, you know, not being able to do any construction because the, the ground's been so soaked. And then, of course, we're dealing with the private, the private roads. We're trying to get through the private roads, and a lot of these people are seasonal, we're, we're struggling to make contact with them. So, I mean, we're trying the best we can to try to wrap this up, and would love to get this project done.
But you got Toll's Mill done?
Toll's Mill is done, yes.
Because that's where I noticed all your workers went. I don't know what the delay was.
No.
Well, I can tell you what, there was a period of time, there was, I live up there.
You're, you're, there was, you are correct.
I know exactly where you're pulling line and laying line, and I, I could see you when you were there and when you weren't.
Yep.
And all of a sudden, you disappeared for months.
Yep.
And Toll's Mill is done, and you're back trying to pull line down Stubbs Bridge Road, which should have been done a long time ago. Just last week, I saw you up on Lawyer's Road with a couple crews trying to dig, do something.
They, what they're, well, let me, let me back up to, I mean, there was a period where construction did stop, and we did...
I know.
We, we actually had to replace crews. We, we changed contracting companies, and we had to replace the crews. So that did create, create some delays also.
But you kept the citizens thinking that they're on, I mean, y'all had a meeting with, I don't know what the fellow's name was, but we had it at Belmont Ruining Club, and he swore up and down, you know, it was going to be done by June, and people up there, you know, we live out in the country, we're used to smelling things, and it didn't smell right. And, I mean, we even, the guy was questioned, but no, no, we'll get it done. And I could tell him right then, it, I mean, it didn't make sense.
We, we had plans when we came to that meeting, that we, we expected to be done by May, and we would just be doing some cleanup work during, during that, the month of June. And we were not successful. I mean, we...
I could have told you that night when I attended. That was easy, that was, my son worked in this, you know, shooting the fiber optic down those conduit for a number of years, and he was very familiar with it, and he's like, I ain't going to do nothing. So, I mean, when you're still working on an entire roadway that should have been done, where there was plenty of days that was nice and dry and sunny and clean, and not a worker around, you know, I think that's one of the frustrations I've gotten from a lot of citizens out there, because most of this was in the Livingston District, is that, you know, number one, the notification process of actually letting them know what was coming down the line and what was going on, you know, because like I said, this, I guess, been in the works or been talked about since '13. Well, that's a good number of years ago, and after, you know, so many years, people deem the, you know, let it sit in the back of their mind, where it's like the roads out there, you know, they talked about paving those unpaid roads for 25 years, and not until it really happens does anybody even believe it. So I'm a little frustrated...
Well, I hope they believe it now, because it is, I mean, there is work that is being done, but that's, that's actually kind of repair work. We're, we're finding some areas where that needs a little bit additional attention, but the residents are able to sign up for service if they, if they so choose.
Okay. I'm just a little frustrated about the...
I understand. I understand, and I apologize that it has taken us this, you know, this additional time. It's, some of it has been beyond our control, some of it has been within our control, and, you know, we, we probably could have done a better job of project managing it.
Okay. How, when, when will you be finished? When do you expect to be finished now?
We've got the 100, we've got the, the half dozen homes that they're, that we identified when we were looking at the cleanup list that were, that are being constructed right now. And then we've, it's the 100, it's the private roads. It's trying to, trying to get the private roads to either, either, you know, give us permits, or I'm sorry, give us easements to come down the road, or acknowledge that they, you know, they're going to deny us the ability to come down. And that will then have to be vetted by, by the county staff.
Okay. Well, I know on at least one of them, private road, I think if the lady had just been giving a little bit of heads up what was coming, and instead of looking out her back window and seeing people dig where her septic system was, she might have been a little bit more accommodating.
I have spoken to her many, many times.
Oh, me too.
Yeah.
So, like I say, if you can't get the folks out there on those, on the private roads, that's their private property, and they have the right to refuse, and I wouldn't, you know, I'd love for you to service everybody out there, but at some point, you got to call it quits and move on. Maybe expand on a little, some other road, give, give a few extra people some assistance.
Well, we did. I mean, we, we, we built 500, what did I say, 518 more addresses than were part of the scope of work.
But isn't, isn't that when you discovered there was plenty of houses to go ahead and do the work, and you had crews out there working?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
It makes sense to me.
I don't understand the question.
Like some of the subdivisions out there weren't, weren't completed, or just had a couple houses probably back in 2013. Now they're full development.
Not really.
I've lived out there all my life.
Okay.
Anyway, well, I don't, I don't mean for this to be, I'm just frustrated for the folks out there that were, made promises that this, this would be done June, and here it is three months later, and you're still working on finishing up.
I understand. I do, I do want to clarify, when you talked about the crews for the Lake Anna project and the crews for the Toll's Mill project, totally separate. They, they did not intermingle at all.
Okay.
And that was, that was, that, that had a whole different parameter to it. It was a much, much smaller project. It was only 150-some homes that, that were built for that.
All righty. Well, I hope, between the county and Comcast, y'all can work out some remedies for what's taken, you know, you had a deadline to meet, you haven't met it, and, you know, I'm sure there's ramifications for, or consequences, and I hope it's just not all excuses, so. I appreciate you coming and being available, and I'm sorry, I'm sure you feel I'm coming at you pretty hard, but it's just frustration for the citizens, and frustration, you know, as they're representative in hearing the complaints. And, you know, when the folks out there are saying it, it ain't going to be done, you know, again, it's like the turn lanes.
It's done.
Don't take rocket scientists to figure it out.
I know.
All right.
Are there any other questions or I can answer?
Nope.
Is there anything else for me?
No.
Last item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is my report in response to requests from Mr. Marshall. I've got a couple of items to run down. Staff has validated the apparent low bid on the animal shelter project and posted on October 3, notice of intent to award to TAF Construction. That puts us at about 45 to 60 days out from contract formation, but we're headed forward toward initiating that project on that low bid. Stations, Fire and Rescue Stations 5 and 11 have had roof repairs done to fix leaks that were encountered, and we're looking forward to the next rain to test those. Chief mentioned earlier, design for the Station 6 renovation should be in procurement now. Mr. Skinner, you had mentioned a interest in studying solar installations at some of our public facilities. A working group of staff is proceeding with a preliminary feasibility study looking at fire stations and community centers for those installations. We'll report further to that, on that to the board, once that preliminary feasibility study is completed. We're moving forward with the relocation of the museum and museum annex to Lick Run. Staff has had a scoping meeting out at Lick Run on implementing that direction, and we've had a preliminary look at the Lake Anna gate relocation, to move the gate further back into the park at Lake Anna to mitigate the traffic backed up on Lawyer's Road. That would be about a quarter of a million dollar Band-Aid or temporary fix, a long-term fix really, in the superintendent's mind down there, is expansion of the, their parking and picnic areas, so they have more capacity for users. That is in their master plan, but they don't have money for that. We are looking to cooperate with the park and in the upcoming legislative process, see if we can't help them get more money from the state. They are actually, are a donor park. They make more, they bring in more than they consume, and so funds generated at Lake Anna go elsewhere. And that finally brings me, next meeting, Mr. Cole will be collecting concepts from you and priorities from you on the legislative agenda for the upcoming session, and that's all I have.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
How about just all ayes?
Aye.
Any nays?